Well, good, we're here. Well, I will call this meeting to order. Our regular scheduled Planning Commission meeting for September 10th, 2019. And we will begin with commissioners' reports. Mr. LaHondro, would you like to begin?
I would love to. I attended two committee meetings this past month. The first one on August 20th for the Board of Architectural Review. We had nine certificates of, no, what are they called? COAs.
Certificate of Appropriateness. You were right.
Certificate of Appropriateness, that's what they are. I assume COA, COA, COA. Issued and then were approved. That include, they included the final design for Belmont Bridge and a mural on the wall of the Violet Crown Theaters, which fronts Second Street. And then we had two COAs deferred for more information. On September the 3rd, the Tree Commission met. We had a Charlottesville resident make a presentation on the compaction of tree roots at Mead Park due to the farmer's market foot traffic. And after discussing possible options for solving this, staff is going to follow up with some of those. And then the 2020 CI, Capital Improvement Project requests were reviewed. Additional monies are being requested by the Tree Commission for funds to partner with an initiative to offset the cost for Emerald Ash Bore Treatment. Currently, the funding is only protecting about 38 of the 107 mature ash trees that are in the city's right-of-way. And then a list of recommended trees for planting in city's gateway corridors was reviewed and approved. The most recent Belmont Bridge plans reviewed with minor comments to be submitted to the city project team. And then lastly, review, we reviewed the numerous insignificant comments by, to the Friendship Court Final Site Plan, and they will be submitted to NDS. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sol, excuse me, Mr. Soloyates?
The Allocation Subcommittee of the Housing Advisory Council met on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 to discuss how to spend the Charlottesville, who am I going to get? A, no, the, the, the housing money, the housing money. We selected the, yeah, I think I can say that. We selected the Crossings Two project as the priority and AHIP as the secondary priority for funding. The majority of my time has been spent on the RFP process. We are working through the procurement process. That is the quote. We are working through the procurement process.
Thank you, Ms. Dow.
Good evening. I do not have any report this time.
Thank you. Mr. Heaton?
I do not have any report this time.
Let's see, none of my subcommittees this month, but I did go to the Form-Based Code workshops at Crescent Halls and City Space and heard mostly from the consultants and a little bit from the community. There's still time to get your comments in. I know the audience is watching rapidly. Just email bryanhuluska@charlottesville.org.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell?
None of my committees met last, but there is a, there is a, there's a Parks and Rec meeting Thursday at 5:30 in the Parks and Rec conference room. And there is a Fontaine Steering Committee meeting at 5:45 on the 17th.
Thank you. Do we have a university report?
Sure, I can go through a couple of things. The Board of Visitors is meeting this week. And really, the things of note for this committee might be that they're going to be reviewing the next phase of the athletics complex. You know, they took down U-Haul. And the next phase is really just to add some grass fields there in its place and some tying together with some pedestrian stuff. And then future phases to follow, hopefully. They're also going to have a presentation from the UVA Sustainability Office, which I thought was kind of interesting. In reading through it, I learned some things I didn't know about our sustainability efforts on grounds right now. Right now, we are on track to meet our greenhouse gas emissions goal, which was 25, reduced by 25 percent below our 2009 levels by 2025. We're set to, we should reach that next year, it sounds like, which is great. We have a nitrogen reduction goal, which we are using 17 percent less nitrogen over our 2010 levels and using 11.7 percent less water over our 2010 levels. So those are, you know, good efforts and taking into account that we have grown a lot since 2010. So even with that growth, we're doing those reductions. And another thing I had no, I didn't realize is that UVA is getting electricity, 20 percent of their electricity is now from solar, which we've invested in two off-site solar farms, which produce about 32 megawatts of power that is sold to the university. And we also have 726 kilowatts of solar panels on grounds right now, in case you're wondering.
Thank you. So I attended the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission on Thursday evening. And they had some vacancies. And so they, it appears that they have filled those vacancies. And the last introduction was the Southside Planning District Commissioner/Executive Director, which is Deborah Gosney. And so I think they've got a full commission or, yes, commission at this point. So that was exciting news. We had a full report on Go Virginia, Region Nine Regional Update. And if you don't know about Go Virginia, that is a, a grant funding program for things in this region, especially, and the more communities in the region that get together, the more grant possibilities there are. And it's for, it's interesting. It's not really for economic development, but it's an interesting grant. I think they have helped some infrastructure, maybe. It's not really for infrastructure like roads, because we have smart scale. But I encourage you all, especially for us as a planning commission, it's Go Virginia. And it's some opportunities I think we should take a look at. And I had my packet with me to bring, and I left it sitting on my desk. I was flipping through it. So, but take a look at that, Go Virginia. And, I mean, maybe there's something there for planning. I mean, maybe there's money there for us to look at some of this planning opportunities for crossing boundaries, the river planning or something like that, since it is a more than one locality. So, that. And the second thing I have is we are going to, here in a moment, report from our nominating committee, because tonight is our annual election of officers. I just want to say I've been honored to be your chair for two years and serve the, serve you all in the public. I know there's a lot of things that we were trying to get accomplished, and maybe we didn't get across the finish line, and hopefully we can do that soon. But I'm, I appreciate your, your patience and your contributions and being, and your, you know, faith in me to lead this commission for the last two years. And with that, I will ask for a report from the nominating committee.
Does the city, Miss Heaton, give a report first?
Not according to the agenda.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, well, I'll be giving that report. And with gratitude to our chair, Lisa Green, for two years of strong, capable leadership. Thank you. I am delighted to make the, make the nomination or to, as the nominating committee, offer the following nominations for Chair, Hosea Mitchell, and for Vice Chair, Lyle Soloyates.
So we have a motion?
No.
Nope. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
The, I will move to accept Hosea Mitchell as our chair, and Lyle Soloyates as our vice chair.
So we have a motion and a second. Do you need a roll call, or how would you like to do this?
Either way. We can, we can do a roll call. That way, there's no pressure.
No pressure? Ms. Creasy, will you call roll?
Sure. Mr. LaHondro?
Aye.
Mr. Soloyates?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell?
Aye.
And Ms. Green?
Aye. And at this point, I will turn the gavel over to Mr. Mitchell.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. The thing that I remember most about, the thing that I remember most about the last transition in leadership is Lisa spilled water all over, you remember that?
That's true.
Over Ms. Dow and, and the current chair. So I'm going to try enough to do that.
What else do you remember about that meeting?
That's about it. Yeah. So, but, but I want to begin, I want to, I want to begin by, Lisa, Ms. Green, just saying, thank you, thank you. The, the passion with which you led this organization, the passion driven by, by your desire to see us do smart planning, smart development, planning and development that is socio-economically, culturally sensitive, diverse, and respectful, has literally made you a force of nature. I mean, to, to the point, to the point, and this is true, that a couple of times I felt like a deer in headlights. And I suspect that my friends on the dais also felt that way. I am certain some of the applicants felt that way, and I'm certain some of the public felt that way. But we are grateful for that. Your passion is, is an inspiration to us. But the thing that I think I'm most grateful for is the, the patience that you use in guiding four newbies to the board. We've got experience on boards like this before, but not on this board under your leadership. You had four newbies to break in, in the last couple of years, and you were very patient with us. There are times again when some of us felt like deer in headlights again, but we got through it. And we felt that way because you were passionate about doing things the way you felt were the right way to do things. So I thank you, Lisa, again. Thank you. All right, we are ready for a report from NDS.
Yes, we are. All right, we have a busy couple of weeks coming up, everyone. We have work session on September 24th. That is our regular work session date. And we're going to be having a preliminary discussion on 218 West Market Street. And that is the development that we have seen in the news. So we'll have more information and opportunity for discussion at that point in time. September 30th, that is the following Monday, will be the work session, our workshop, on the Standards and Design Manual. We're hopeful that we can get some good feedback at that opportunity, and then it's on course to move forward through the approval process. So we're, we're hopeful we'll make some progress there. And we also, in October, instead of having our work session on the 4th Tuesday, we're going to have that on the 3rd Tuesday, which is October 15th. And we've cleared that with everyone's schedule. Everyone except for perhaps Jody is available. And that is going to be a work session on the Form-Based Code as we are getting the Form-Based Code prepared for hearing in November. So that'll be another opportunity for folks to, to provide feedback on that. So we, we've got a busy couple, couple of weeks coming up here. In the middle of that, we've got the October regular meeting on the 8th. So we'll be seeing you guys many, many times. We are in the process of working for a candidate for our assistant position. So we should hopefully have someone joining us next week or next month. But in the meantime, Carrie has still been on staff with us, doing minutes from afar. And she's still providing us with, with our minutes there. And I think that's probably all we have right now. I'm glad someone accepted the chair. I appreciate that. And thank you to the nominating committee. I'm glad all that worked out. It's always awesome when, when that occurs. And we'll look forward to the year ahead.
Any questions for Ms. Creasy? Ms. Green?
You know, I'm not going to be able to stop talking, though.
I know.
Ms. Creasy, since our November works, our meeting is going to be on Form-Based Code, I think that we're going to have a lot of public input. And I'd like for us, if possible, to take a look at that schedule and not put four or five public hearings on that one, so that we don't feel, A, rushed, we're here so late, and the public gets enough time to speak on that. Because I think this is an important thing that we've been working on for a very long time. And I know that we're going to have a lot of people that do want to speak about that. So if we could...
I'm, I'm thinking most applicants won't want to be on that day anyway. But from, we still have a little bit of time before the deadline date for that, but we'll make everyone aware of the circumstances, and we'll do the best we can to balance the agenda.
Thank you.
Anything else? Right, with that, what we will do is open up for a public hearing. What else?
Sorry.
Consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chair, Mitchell, we have to do matters to be presented first.
That's where I was going, but you said, "Sorry."
Oh, I thought you had said we were going to a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Hey, well, it is, but it's not the public hearing.
You are, you are correct. Sorry. I heard public hearing and went, "Oh, it's not six yet."
So if there's anyone who, I don't think anyone signed up, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to chat with us about anything besides the Rugby Road S U P, now would be the opportunity to do that. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address. It appears that there is no one interested, so we'll close that public hearing in the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
For our section, I have it. We are now going to be in recess until council arrives. I think one council person's here. Ms. Creasy, do we have three?
We have three councils coming in.
We'll be in recess till six.
Weight off your shoulders.
I'm so proud you're in that chair. Don't you worry. I'd really open it up now.
It's interesting. The building, when you guys were having a meeting in here and walked out, you noticed there were a lot of people and passionate people.
Oh, yes, of course, it's a home park. Pretty tail's dead.
You have shrunk to you, maybe. I mean... I don't know, I just bought clothes and then I got chilled.
Interesting. Were you there?
Yeah, yeah.
So, David, David, David Allen III.
That was the West Bank.
What's that? Or next to the old.
It should.
Yes, it should.
Oh, really?
So I'm working on it. Which is classical buildings in the Hospital Drive.
Yes, because this is, it's a Mary Flies.
Hospital Drive. Should have passed the first.
It was moved there on April 10th.
No, 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 that was, that's varsity.
That guy walking around, so he has some classical work.
And it was constructed in 1999. So, they're going to, those who was terrible, they're back.
So we don't do what, or we're just not doing this meeting?
Speaking of anyone?
Mike and Wes. Yeah, I had the mic on left, because I was going to say something.
Because you're saying if, if UVA changed standards, they could do whatever they want? That's a good question.
Yep, that's why we have a UVA representative on the commission.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. Wait, we're here. We're ready.
And good evening again, and we are ready to continue our deliberations. Madam Mayor, is council in order? And council is in order, and the planning commission is now in order. We, we've got, we've got one public hearing. And that one hearing, it relates to a special use permit. The application number is SP 1900004. The subject location is 503 Rugby Road. The project is fronting, obviously, on Rugby Road and Lambeth Lane. The property is currently a sorority house that is owned to house up to 36 residents. The, the owners are requesting a revision in zoning that will allow them to... The, the owners are requesting a revision in zoning that will allow them to house up to thirty seven residents. There will also be some significant renovations associated with the, with the application that we will review as well tonight. It should be noted that the property is currently zoned multifamily for medium density. It is also subject to historical overlays. The property is also within the Rugby Road, the Rugby University Circle available neighborhood and architectural design control district. And it should also be noted that the current land use map indicates that this should be a high-density residential development in that area. So Mr. Winter, I believe you own this one.
I don't, I don't own it, but good evening.
And what we'll do is we'll let you walk us through your report, then we'll have council and folks in the DAS ask questions. And then we'll bring the applicant up and the applicant will do a presentation. Again, we'll do question and answers. And then we'll open it up for public hearing.
Okay. Good evening. Joey Winter, city planner in NDS. So this item is a special use permit for a sorority of up to thirty seven residents at five oh three Rugby Road. Just as a reminder, there was a preliminary discussion of this at the August Planning Commission meeting. The Cap Capagama Sorority is proposing to expand and renovate their existing chapter house at this location. The property's owned R three historic and it has a valid special use permit for a sorority of up to thirty six residents, which was granted by city council in nineteen seventy eight. So the request is for one additional resident. Additionally, modifications to the front and side setbacks are being requested. The property lies in an architectural design control district, so the Board of Architectural Review made a recommendation on this request. And BAR recommends that granting this special use permit will not have an adverse impact on the ADC district. Regarding public comment for this item, there were two neighbors present at the community meeting held by the applicant on August sixth. They were both in favor of the request. Staff received one email from a nearby property owner in favor of this request. And at this point, no public comment in opposition to this request has been received. Some issues to consider with this SUP request tonight. Is the proposed use appropriate for the neighborhood? There are at least fifteen fraternities or sororities within a thousand feet of the subject property. The subject property also directly abuts the UVA campus. And this subject property has been in use as a sorority with up to thirty six residents for the past thirty five or so years. Another question is, are there reasonable conditions that can be set forth to mitigate adverse impacts the proposed use will have on the neighborhood? And staff has some proposed conditions that I will get to in a minute. And finally, should the front and side yard regulations be modified as part of this request? The applicant stated reasons for requesting modified front and side yard regulations are to permit ornamental features, roof overhangs, and covered porches, and also to permit the front and north sidewalls of the building to remain in their current locations. So it's important to note that this request for modified yard regulations is not to increase density. As I mentioned, staff has proposed six conditions for this SUP. At your August meeting, the planning commission gave guidance to staff to look at the SUP granted for the Alpha Kappa Service Fraternity that's on Jefferson Park Avenue. So those served as the basis for these proposed conditions. Condition one would set the maximum number of sorority residents at thirty seven. Conditions two and three would modify the front and side yard regulations as requested by the applicant and recommended by BAR. And then condition four deals with parking. Due to limited physical space available on the site, additional signing and pavement markings may be necessary. So this condition would allow traffic engineering staff to require these markings and would also ensure that parking onsite is utilized exclusively for the sorority. Condition five would add additional requirements for sight lighting. That would be above and beyond what the ordinance typically requires. And this condition is taken directly from that Alpha Kappa special use permit. And condition six would require the screening of all trash receptacles. And again, this is taken from that Alpha Kappa SUP. So in conclusion, the general standards for issuance of a special use permit are found in City Code section thirty four one fifty seven and also in your packet and City Code thirty four one sixty two, which allows the modification of yard regulations as a condition of a special use permit is also included in your packet. I'm available to answer any questions.
Mr. Palmer, do you have any questions?
Really, well, I mean, there's a lot of pedestrian access in that area during construction. Will pedestrian access be maintained throughout? Or will there be any impingement upon the current sidewalks there?
There is a site plan under review for this project and that would include any proposed sidewalk closings or street closings of that nature.
Ms. Green. Mr. Stoltenberg.
Got nothing.
Reverend Eaton.
No questions.
Ms. Dow.
Just one small minor question. I know during our last meeting, we asked about the noise impacts, being that it was a sorority house, but also got info or feedback that it was in their rules that they couldn't have parties or something of that nature. I was just wondering, was there any way we could like get that memorialized in this only because we are, what if their rules change? We never know. And we are making an SUP for the land, not the occupants.
You, you lost me. Would you, would you repeat that? I just want to make sure I'm following.
Oh, no, no worries. So during our August meeting, we had talked about the noise impacts because this was a sorority and we brought up the question of parties and things of that nature. The response from the applicant was that UVA's rules or standards is that sororities can't have parties or something. I was just wondering, is that is accurate, correct?
But wouldn't the standard noise ordinance apply?
Okay, well, I was just checking. I know we had mentioned that, but I didn't hear anything about it in the conditions. So just in case.
You're comfortable if these standard ordinance will apply. You're comfortable.
Just making sure we covered everything.
Mr. Soliets.
I've been wordsmithing. I hope you'll indulge me. Looking at proposed condition five, I'm thinking about possible edit for to read in the last sentence, fixtures shall completely conceal the light source. So we're not specifying how the light source is concealed, merely requiring the light source be concealed. Does that make sense? Is that a reasonable approach or would there be a better way of putting that?
We took direction as staff from just taking what that previous SUP was. I know the applicant has had some concerns or would like some clarification on this. That's something you could certainly bring up with them about what would be comfortable with that.
But the, the language that I'm describing, I'm just saying the fixtures shall completely conceal the light source from all viewing positions other than those onsite positions intended to receive illumination from the fixture. Would that be actionable to staff? Would that, would that be?
In terms of getting rid of that or?
Is that consistent with what we're attempting to accomplish? Because this goes beyond what we're attempting to accomplish.
I want to weigh in on this, but I'm going to do that at conversation, at our discussion point. I have some insight on that, I think. And so I'll, I'll leave that for that point.
Thank you.
Mr. Langford.
Nothing. Thank you.
Any questions from council? All right, this is the applicant here.
Hi, my name is Erin Hannigan with Mitchell Matthews Architects again. I have the full presentation here and the full packet from the revised materials that we provided to you, but I don't think it's necessary to go through it all. So I'm, can do as any small portion of it as necessary or can just highlight things that have been modified. There've been very small plan changes that have occurred since we've seen you last. Some additional clarifications that happened in the packet, but otherwise the proposal is as it was.
Well, I, I think that walking through the modifications would be good. Is that, is everyone comfortable with that?
Okay. So in the packet, we included a page that outlined those modifications. That's this page. You, this is a new page for your packet, but you did see it in the last meeting. It talks about the current conditions in the sorority house with very narrow bedrooms that are approximately nine feet wide and that that's one of the primary reasons that the applicant would like to undergo a renovation to increase the bedroom size. The width of the bedroom is particularly narrow and by increasing that width, we can get accessibility in all of the bedrooms. They're currently, again, dealing with beds that are smaller than standard twin beds and this will allow them to utilize regular sized furniture when, after the renovation. Additionally, in the chapter room, their current chapter room is separated from the front parlor by a massive fireplace and that restricts the length of the room and the amount of people that you can fit into that room. Additionally, the chapter has grown in size significantly from the, the time of construction of this original design. And so we're removing that fireplace up through the building from basement to the roof and instead creating a large chapter room that takes over those two rooms and expands out the back and utilizes operable doors that allow it to open up and join those spaces during the particular evenings that the chapter meetings occur and close down and function differently during the rest of the week. This is the same. So again, this image for the general public outlines the, the spaces in red or the addition and it's generally to the rear of the building along with some infill on the front corner. Skipping forward. There's been no significant change to the site plan since you've seen it last. The basement has not changed. The requested, or the calculation of the current setbacks was modified since you last saw it based on staff comments. And so the front yard setback, we had to take into account the existing building in the average on the street. And so that pushed it, the front yard setback, I think it came out actually. And then the side yard setback, staff pointed out to us that we were utilizing ten feet, which was the minimum instead of the one foot for every two feet in height. And so recalculating that based on the proposed height pushes it in even further. But we did not change what our request for the setback relief is. At the first floor, slight plan modifications have to do with openings here to save a, a lentil and a pier with construction detailing that we've evolved since then. And nothing has changed on the upper two residential floors. And nothing has changed on the roof. Again, just the setbacks show up differently. I'll come back to these when talking about the lighting, but the elevations do show some of the proposed lighting that is not recessed. And the fixtures don't all conceal the light source. So, but I'll come back to that. So on the elevations, slight modifications, light fixtures were removed, roll-up course was added at the top of the brick wall. Otherwise, the general detailing and enassing of it has remained completely the same as you've seen before. These renderings from the, the previous version that you saw have the landscape plan incorporated into the rendering. So it's depicting the, the plan that's matching the site plans in the middle and our landscape plans that are in the packet as opposed to the previous one, which was an early conceptual design. And it has this sunken terrace, if you haven't studied that, has a sunken terrace off of Rugby Road that then allows you to, to walk up a few steps to get back to the front porch and in the front door to create a procession into the building. It creates, again, that porch on the front is really important to us to create a character defining feature on the front of the building that connects it to the street, provides an entry on the street that it has its address on, which is not currently the case. Nothing's changed here. Again, the calculations changed here and we added this column on the right that describes why we're asking for the modification. And these diagrams have been updated to reflect those, those changed calculations. Again, this, the numbers have changed, but the diagram generally stays the same. And we, you haven't seen this, these were prepared for BAR. They show on the left what we're proposing with our eve depth at the roof line and on the right, what would be allowed under the current ordinance with a maximum of twelve inches projection. And it makes a significant difference when you look at the renderings. This is what cutting those roof eaves back to the twelve inch currently allowable dimension would look like versus what we're requesting, which really caps the building. These sections were also added to your packet to describe what the existing condition is on the left. The elements dashed on the middle section that are being removed and the, and the diagram on the right shows the proposed condition. So before there were questions about where the new wall was being proposed relative to the existing wall. And you can see in these three wall sections that the foundation wall is staying the same. It's the existing condition. And the red line is drawn out from that in each of the three sections. And so you can see the relationship between where the existing front facade was and where we're proposing it to be in the renovated condition. Of course, the porch projects past that. That's what's seen on the right. And these are sections that do the same thing on other sides of the building. The red line is again showing you where the face of existing construction lies. And again, we're extending that upwards to add additional story. The same goes with these, the one on the right in particular, we're expanding to the rear. That's where the chapter room connects to another room. It's called the sunroom that allows that room to become larger. Staff rounding rules changed our parking calculation. And so we believe at this point we're required to have eleven spaces rather than twelve. It doesn't change the fact that we're, have ten onsite and one will be provided offsite. During the last meeting, you asked questions about bicycle parking. We've calculated that we will be required to have five spaces. We're providing five locations for bike racks. So these diagrams are showing that again, the revised calculations at the top. And then this new diagram, again, this bike terrace that's off to the side will have five bike rack space locations. In addition, we've illustrated that the bike lockers over here will have five bike lockers, which help with the reduction of the parking requirements. And these are specifications for what we're using. And the last thing that we started to update in this packet is the lighting plan, which in the previous packet, we had an issue of a fixture on this side that was outside the house director's entry that was causing spillover across the property line. That wouldn't meet your ordinance. We've revised that and removed that light fixture to drop the lighting levels over there. Otherwise, we've left the, the light fixtures as is. The rest of the site works for the ordinance, the calculations of the property line as well as the meeting ordinance for full cutoff dark sky. And, but the fixtures that we've selected, some of them are located under a porch or under other elements that actually restrict the, the light that's emitted from them. And therefore, if they, even if light comes out the top, it's being cut off by the porch roof, for instance. And therefore, we're hoping that you'll just strike that last line from condition number five completely with the understanding that we are in a historic control district and that we will be going in front of BAR and BAR will need to approve all of our lighting fixtures. And therefore, there will be additional scrutiny over what we're using and where we're putting it. And hopeful that you'll leave it to them to come up with the correct and appropriate solution. And I can take questions.
Mr. Langford, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Soliets.
The, if I can pull it back up. The wordsmithing that I was suggesting earlier, removing the section about recessing fixtures and just saying that fixtures shall completely conceal the light source, would that work in? in your mind or even that would not work?
So in particular, the reason why we don't, we would request that not be a condition is because one of the fixtures that we're utilizing, and I'm gonna pull up the cut sheet for it so you can see what I'm talking about, and this is in the, this is in the BAR packet, it's not in your packet, looks like this. You can see that the bulb is visible.
Dun dun dun.
It is on the front porch, it's on the pilasters that are back at the house rather than out at the front porch columns and so that statement, we would argue, would conflict with, like, we would probably need to replace this fixture under that condition.
Can I see that?
I'm sorry.
Ah.
Would that create an aesthetic issue?
Well, that's where we feel, yes, that, and BAR would have purview over that and so we're asking you to strike that and allow BAR to control that.
Thank you.
Ms. Dowell?
No questions.
Reverend Heaton?
No question.
No questions, thanks.
Ms. Green?
No, thank you.
UVA?
No questions.
Cool. And council? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point, we can open it up for a public hearing. So, if you'd like to speak, please step up, state your name and tell us where you live and there's a list of folks. It looks like Eddie Croft.
Hey, hi, everyone. My name is Addie and I'm the chapter president. I'm a fourth year at UVA and I lived in the house last year, so I can speak to a little bit more of why this is necessary and I also am in the house all the time. So, last year, living in the house, you can actually, if you're in bed, reach across and hold your roommate's hand. So this, it's a little bit uncomfortable just living in these cramped conditions, living in, I'm five foot nine in a small twin bed. It's a little bit uncomfortable as well. And additionally, we hold chapter meetings every Sunday and we have to cram everyone into our main chapter room and it's uncomfortable for everyone to sit in there pretty much on top of each other on our couches and on the seats, so it would be great if we could expand, expand the chapter room. And then also, we're a chapter that's constantly growing and one of the main things that you do as a sorority is recruitment and so we're recruiting new members every year, every January. And aesthetically, our house just doesn't really suit our needs. If you've seen the pictures, it's really hard to compete with some of the really beautiful sorority houses when we're inviting members into our house every January, inviting new potential members. And so this would be another great way to recruit awesome new members into our house. So, that's pretty much everything that I was gonna speak about today.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Karen?
Hello and thank you. I was here in 1978 when the Capa House was being designed. That was when interest rates were 17 percent. The architects built a beautiful house, but when the prices came in, it was absolutely unaffordable. So it was tried to be minimized, which it was done, and as a result, many did not feel it fit this particular area. When the house was built, there were 60 members. Currently, it's almost tripled in membership. So everything is getting very squashed on the interior. The bedrooms were always tiny, tiny and this was designated by the city because we had to have so many parking spaces per square feet of bedroom space and they are unbelievably small. So by accepting this new design, not only is Rugby Road being enhanced, but the entire sorority is being enhanced. I'm a resident of University Circle and everybody's very happy about this change, as well as in the Venable neighborhood. So we hope this is a design that will be accepted by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Woody?
Hi. I'm Woody Oki. I was a member of the sorority back in the mid-'90s. I'm a local resident now and I'm a member of the house board, so I'm involved with the sorority very frequently. Back, as everyone has said, I'd like to reiterate exactly what Addie and Karen just said about how small the rooms are, how cramped it is. When I was there, I mean, we were squeezed in like sardines for chapter meetings and I can only imagine now with it being 30 percent bigger than it was then, how they're able to do it. I think the revised design is beautiful and is in keeping with the historical neighborhood and I know I was, I also used to live right down the road, on Rugby Road, 15 years ago. And I would love, love to have seen this building on my daily walks. The other thing that I don't think anybody's mentioned is the study spaces and the lounge spaces for the residents. We have significantly increased with this design the amount of study spaces that are available to not only the residents, but the other members who can just come by the house, eat their meals and study there. And also the lounge spaces for the residents. There are lounges on the second and third residential floors, so they can feel more at home where they live. So, anyway, I would propose that you'd move this special use permit forward and that's all I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Go in once, go in twice. The public hearing is now closed. Ms. Green, you have some comments that you want to get out, why don't we start with you?
Sure. Couple things. Well, I think I understand where you're coming from for, with that, the completely concealed. Some of this, and we've had some problems in some other projects where the light in the, like, the stairwells and stuff is even more visible than the site lighting because we've got such restrictions on the site lighting, being full cutoff, which is why it's there for dark skies. But I can see, so I can understand what, the need for this concealment. That being said, I'm not sure these two porch lights are gonna be any different than the porch lights all throughout the corridor. And based off of what we heard in the pre-meeting, I'm pretty comfortable with the site lighting meeting the dark skies ordinance with, and that dark skies ordinance does not allow for those, any horizontal spillover. So those, the bulbs would be concealed at that point. The only other thing I would say is bike parking is important and I don't know why that wasn't a part of our conditions, to make sure that happens. So as I look at this, I wanna make sure we add that as a part of our conditions, potentially...
It's a requirement.
Yeah, it's a requirement, 34-881.
So is the amount a requirement? Are they put adding more or are they, what is the requirement amount?
They're meeting the requirement.
Meeting the requirement? Strike that?
Yeah, it would be one, one space per 500 feet of bedroom space and the site plan is not approved, but they will not get an approved site plan without proposing at least that much.
Okay. Then the only thing I would say is, I mean, my opinion is the design is a vast improvement over what is there, so.
Other thoughts? Mr. LaHendrick, perhaps?
Well, I wasn't gonna say anything until that. But the, when this design was done in 1979 and '80, this was actually a notable building and it was an interesting building in Charlottesville, something that tried to transition between the traditional neo-revivals that were done time and time again and modern architecture. And it was an interesting building, it remains an interesting building despite what the ladies think and what you think, but I'm resigned to the fact that it's gonna be replaced with this.
Notice I'm not one of the ladies. Do you hear that? Thanks, Mr. LaHendrick.
Appreciate it.
Just to put that in perspective, I've heard Jody give that exact same speech about my old house, two doors down, at 5:15 Rugby Road, when all of the BAR was rooting for it to be torn down. So personally, I don't feel that we need the lighting requirement. I do think dark sky rules are important, I was an astronomy minor, but in general, even if there is some spillover of light that's not upward, I think this is a pretty good place for it. You know, you have Pike on one side, you have Westminster Church and Eighty-Pie across the street, you have a big open street going down to Lambeth, and I walked through that parking lot many hundreds of times back in the day. So it's not super well-lit now, it can be kinda sketchy at night. I don't feel like restricting lighting in this area is necessarily the way to go.
Mr. Solietts?
This looks like a huge improvement, I'm excited about it. The old building was great, I think this is, this is better.
Ms. Dowell?
I am satisfied.
Reverend Heaton?
I think it's an improvement as well.
UVA? So, it looks like we're about ready for motion.
I move to recommend approval of a special use permit allowing the specific development proposed within the application materials for SP 19-0003, subject to the following...
0004, isn't it?
Yeah. Hmm, I just printed that up.
That's okay, go ahead with your motion.
004. On the basis that the proposal would service public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, for the special use permit to authorize a boarding fraternity sorority house use with up to 37 residents, it's 503 Rugby Road, the building, within a building of the size and location depicted, within the proposal plans, preliminary site plan, subject to the conditions as listed in the staff report, with the exception of removing condition five and allowing the our lighting ordinance to be the guide, as well as the BAR.
Ms. Vera Solietts, would you like to second that?
I would.
A voice acclamation, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? We will recommend moving forward this to council. And that would be the end of our public hearing and we will now move on to the prior, prior proposal on West Main Street. And that would be SP 190003. And for the sake of consistency, I'm going to hand the gavel to Mr. Solietts.
Thank you very much. Just finding my way here.
Mr. Solietts, you got this? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's got it. All right. That's right. Forgot about that.
All right.
I'm gonna move my phone.
Discussing.
I'm gonna whap it.
Application for a special use permit, application number SP 19-00003. I believe we have Brian Hulasko here to speak.
Yep. So this is a continuation of an item that was on your previous agenda, so obviously you completed the public hearing at your last meeting and are now, you directed, you tabled this item at your last meeting so that staff could work on revised conditions for the building located at 612, the special use permit located at 612 West Main Street. The applicant is, we've discussed the revised condition about the monitoring of the adjacent property at 620 to 624 West Main Street and have come with condition four in your staff report on page 14, which details all of the, the monitoring of that adjacent building that should be undertaken. So that's the revised condition that's before you today. The other items that, as we talked about in the pre-meeting, that the applicant would like you to consider, I believe, are items on condition one, items B and C, or items B and then, where's the parking one I'm looking for, E. They drafted a letter that was forwarded to you regarding those two conditions and they have a supplemental visualization of the parking that I can hand to you, but they've registered their concerns with that condition, so I think those are really the three items to discuss on this matter and that's where we can pick up, so.
Okay, questions on this?
I'm available.
Ms. Green?
I'm fine.
Ms. Stolzner?
Nope.
Ms. Reverend Heaton?
No questions.
Ms. Dowell?
No questions, but I would like to make a statement.
Please.
I do wanna say thank you for considering our concerns, especially when it comes to protecting the landmarks around you.
I have no questions. And, Mr. LaHendrick?
First, I want to restate what I said last time when this came before us, that I need to be clear that I have, that I do pro bono advising to First Baptist Church, but I receive no payment for that and I do not believe my advising to them affects my ability to be objective with this application. With that, Brian, I do have a question. Where did, where did you all find the protective plan recommendations? It seems like it came from a...
No, the broad general outline came from a publication of the Department of Interior that Ms. Galman actually located during the meeting the last time you were here and so I...
I think the tech notes, it looks like, or something like that, the National Park Service tech notes or...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so that, the general outline of topics that, that are appropriate to be included within these sorts of things came from that, that, those recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
All right. This isn't a public hearing, so there is no public comment, correct? Could we hear from the applicant, if you wish?
Yeah. Thank you, good to see you all again. I know my wife is sitting there saying, after Commissioner Dowell gave you some gracious comments, you should stop, but I have to respectfully request a modification to one of the conditions, please, and a clarity to one of the conditions. The parking spaces that were provided in the original plan was just a very general outline, no different than the building design, which I had explained is primarily a big ugly box. So the 53 spaces was not created by any particular design, it was kinda what could be shoved in as an indication. And it particularly did not take into account what the BAR and as well as the planning commission has in a condition as far as us setting back the garage opening from West Main Street. So we took another look at it to more appropriately look at what the parking would yield and I think 40 spaces is much more appropriate for that. It complies with zoning, I will tell you, we always have to comply with the zoning ordinance and we will. I actually know that 40 spaces complies more than required from the zoning ordinance because I believe you can have a large amount of the parking offsite in this zone. So I would respectfully ask that you change the 53 spaces to a minimum of 40 spaces, again, looking for no relief from what the zoning ordinance would require. The second thing is just a small clarification, which I'm not 100% sure I need, but I would like to have it clarified because there was a discussion on it last time. I was talking about trying to get possibly more stories in this envelope that's provided in the ordinance. I'm willing to concede that, understanding that four stories is appropriate, but I would not like to decrease the... but I would not like to decrease the height limit that is permitted under the ordinance. And that ordinance was specifically revised in this corridor by the city to decrease height there down to 52 feet. So I do not know why we would further decrease that by two feet, and two feet might not mean a lot, but to a developer it does, especially when you've changed the rules on appurtenances as well. So I'm willing to definitively agree that the four stories be a maximum, provided it does not, and I have some language, but that it's also four stories but permitted within the maximum height of the ordinance. So with those two changes, and I think our protection plan, I've worked really hard with Counselor Robertson, I think we've got a really good submission here with conditions, and I thank you for your consideration.
Questions? Ms. Green?
Not at this time.
Mr. Stoltenberg?
So, sorry, you said you're willing to concede four? Does that mean you're gonna do four no matter what, or would you prefer five? I mean, four with 52 feet seems like it would be quite tall ceilings, right?
I think that's the right design, and I've talked to my team, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to limit it to the four stories. I think that's inappropriate, and whatever comes out, if we do a little more on the retail side, I think it's a good design. I'm not going to try to shove five stories in. I heard you're concerned with that and the BARs are not...
Okay, thanks.
Reverend Eaton?
No concerns.
Ms. Dowell?
Yes, I just had one question for clarification. What is the parking requirement through the zoning ordinance?
The parking requirement, well first of all, the other thing that's a little bit fluid is it also depend on your unit mix. So right now, we don't have a definitive unit mix, and it's kind of this cart and a horse thing, or chicken and egg, because we have to come here, request density, so we understand how many units we can do. Then we understand how many units we can do in the envelope, we can then lay out the unit layouts. But based on a certain mix, and we've sent it on to Mr. Hleska, we think we'd probably only have to do like 20 spaces onsite because of the allowance of the permission for off-site spaces. There's another thing I wanted to point out, in 600 West Main, I had come forward with an SUP, and I requested a waiver for a half a car per studio space. And here, I'm not making that request, I don't want to ask for things I don't need, and I don't think, I don't need that request. I would just, again, looking at the footprint, 40 spaces is a more appropriate and adequate layout for this.
And then I just had one other question. Where would your, can you tell me what your off-site parking would be? Or have you figured that out yet?
I haven't figured it, but I don't know if I'll need it. Again, when I look at the unit mix and I come down to the exact, I mean, it's, it might be, it might be that we need 50 cars and we can get 50 cars. It might need, we only need 40 and we can do them onsite. It might mean we can do, we need 45, but we only can do, we can do five off-site. 600 West Main, we provide them at Jefferson School. So I would make, you know, similar provisions for that, but I don't know the exact amount. If it's two spaces, it could be found in a lot of places. If it's 10, we'd have to look in a different place.
Okay, only because parking is definitely a major issue in this area? And we do not want to keep bleeding into the existing neighborhood?
I don't either. I do not.
Mr. LaHondro?
I have a couple of questions about the protect, protective plan. I presume you've looked at it and are okay with it?
Yes.
As it is now?
Yes.
And my concerns are that, a couple of them. One, the protection, well, to summarize, the protective plan has several components, baseline, survey, ongoing monitorings, and then a protection, protective plan. The baseline survey indicates that visual documentation is required, which may include color photographs and video recordings. I'd like to say that, I don't know how you do visual documentation without color photographs, so I'd like to make that a requirement, shall include color photographs.
That's fine.
Seems like a...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, maybe it was, yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
And then the protective plan...
Maybe so they could be black and white, I don't know.
Fit their historic nature in the building.
Yes, exactly.
It's a colorful building. The protective plan calls for one, but it doesn't really tell us what it is. And, and it says it may include seismic monitoring or other monitoring measures. And I'd like to once again say shall include seismic monitoring or other specific monitoring measures as recommended by the engineer, and minimally will include installation of at least five crack monitors that will be inspected weekly during ground disturbing activities, during demolition and construction. And then the reports of the monitor readings shall be submitted to the city building official and adjacent landowner within two days of the inspection. This is just a way to monitor the building, to see if there's, I mean, it doesn't do any good to have crack monitors or some other seismic monitoring if no one's looking at it during the process of construction and demolition to make sure that's nothing happening. So this is just a way of having that monitoring being done actively during the construction process.
Can I ask my construction guru if he...
Yes. And I'd say, I say ground disturbing demolition and construction, there's no need to be looking at the crack monitors when they're putting in the windows of the building. So I'm talking about when there's seismic activity happening.
Well, could we break it down into, because the shall do seismic, I thought we were leaving that for the city engineer and our engineer to work on what the appropriate methods were, so I, and I'm not an expert, so I don't know if, I don't know if we shall do seismic, or we shall do something equivalent to that?
I'm not, I'm not saying that the seismic is required. The only thing, I say minimally required are five crack monitors.
Okay, thank you. No, I just heard the word shall do seismic, and I, and I don't know.
The seismic, seismic or other specific monitoring measures, the minimum being five crack monitors.
Fine, that's a good point, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, discussion?
I've got one more question. What are the ceiling heights in the Phase 1 of this project?
Finished, like finished floor to ceiling?
Eight something, eight, depending on where it is in the bedrooms?
Depending on the part of the bedroom.
Yeah.
Right.
Additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Get into discussion?
Jody, thank you for that comment, because when we met last month, that was exactly what I was going for. Yes, we have something in place, or have a system, but what are we gonna do to track it? So that was awesome, thank you.
Yeah, good, thank you. But I do want to thank the developer for, and his consultants for considering this, for including something to help protect the historic building next door, and I'm very grateful personally for that.
I appreciate that.
So on the subject of the stories requirement, so I'm, seems to me that we're talking about 52 feet either way, or 50 feet potentially, but they'd like to not have that. But we're going to be imposing a limit of four stories within that. And, I mean, to me, I mean, I don't know what concerns you heard from BAR, I guess I wasn't there. But I mean, I think that, at least from my perspective, we shouldn't be mandating that within the exact same building you have like 12, 13-foot, like soaring ceiling heights. I don't really even get what the like visual problem with shorter stories is anyway, but like just that, you know, extra multiple feet of ceiling height is naturally going to make those apartments higher end. And I mean, I think, you know, if I read the room, I think the thing we want you to do is have, you know, more less expensive apartments. And I, I think a fifth story within the same footprint, or the same envelope, would be good. I mean, nine stories, or nine feet is ample.
Well, the density doesn't change, right? The density of units doesn't change.
That's true.
Whether it's four or five stories.
But it would give room, I mean, they could become two or three bedrooms instead of a one-bedroom in that case, if there's more square footage.
I'm fine with leaving that up to the developers, to the developer decide what, how many floors he wants to get within that 52-feet limit.
Further discussion? How do we feel about parking? Personally, I don't see much value in making a parking requirement at this time. But I'm getting a face.
Parking is a super important. We have a lot of, sorry, they're gonna kill me. We have a lot of new projects that have went up on West Main Street, and we've heard from the public that it is an issue. So not that I think that we need to be overparked, I'm hoping that we are going towards a more walkable city, but we do have to still keep in mind that where there are people, there are cars, and they have to go somewhere.
I have a question about that really quick. There's 53 on this plan, or that was what I saw as a requirement?
53 is...
Condition? Is that because of the commercial aspect on the lower floor to provide for that? Because you will have that as part of 40 maybe ample for the amount of, number of apartments. But I wondered, is that what that is, is you're taking it...
The 53 was part of the condition that was drafted based on the original submission, which showed kind of a template of, a template of a floor plate of parking the applicant provided, and there were 53 spaces there. So I think that's where that number comes from. To answer Commissioner Dowell's question about the parking requirements in West Main to a little greater detail, any retail space of 5,000 square feet or less is exempt from any parking calculations in West Main East. So as long as they keep the retails under 5,000, there's no parking required for that. This is also in the parking modified zone, so all residential units, they require one space per unit regardless of size. And then there are provisions for affordable units, not counting towards the parking requirement as well, and I think that's pretty much citywide. So, and then, we, in the parking modified zone, we also permit a number of ways for people to meet those requirements. 40 space, so a certain percentage of spaces can be, you can do them onsite, you can do them offsite within a certain distance, or you can pay into a parking fund. There's a number of ways, parking funds, very few people have taken advantage of that. So that's, that's the zoning requirement that would be in place regardless of what condition is here, or if there is no condition in the SUP, they would still have to meet all of it.
Is that 5,000, like, for a retail store, or for all of the retail within a building?
I believe it's for the retail store. I think it's an attempt to try to make small retail, you know, more attractive versus, you know, a large-scale storefront that takes up everything.
Gotcha. I have a question about the, is, how many of these parking spots are reserved for the residents? Which ones are available for daily parking?
I don't...
And one more, one more question is, also with Sunday morning parking, when you're next to a church, there's a lot of times arrangements made ahead of time. Anything in the applicant, application about that?
There's nothing in the application about that, about Sunday morning parking. The management of parking, the code is silent on the management of parking. So people are required to provide, you know, parking in accordance with the code. How they manage that, if they reserve it all for the residential use, and anyone coming to a store just has to find alternate parking somewhere else.
Can we ask the applicant that without talking about proffers?
Well, you can't talk about proffers at all.
That's what I mean.
Can we ask them about what their plans are?
Well, this is not a rezoning, so proffer, the word proffer is not even, so it's not even...
So you can, you can certainly ask the applicant, yeah, how they intend to do it. I mean, they've got another building they're about to open, so I would assume that they would have some idea of...
And in the Phase 1, we like, we impose a condition that they submit their, like, parking plan to the city every year for how they're gonna provide those shared parking spaces and off-site spaces, right?
They, they have, there's language regarding the off-site spaces. We've had an agreement with them about the lease length and how that's managed. So there is kind of a five-year period where if they can find alternate spaces somewhere, or if we change our parking requirements, they're not tied into a very long-term lease at the Jefferson School, they can, after five years, they can let it go.
Is that lease length for residents, or just for the residents of a...
I'm not sure how they, how they're managing it. So they would have to comment on how they're allocating the spaces.
Sort of related, for the standards SUP, seem to recall that they had, like, a ton of parking, like 499 spots or something, and that there was actually a requirement that they make those spots publicly available if they weren't leased.
We had a discussion about that. I believe the way that condition is worded, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, and my memory might not be great about this, but I believe we were asking that the parking deck be designed in such a way that if it turned out that two and a half spaces per unit was dramatically more than they needed, that there was a way to potentially install a gate somewhere in that deck so that the lower portions could potentially be publicly used, and the upper portions, if they had a tag or whatever, were reserved for whatever they needed. So we really, we just wanted them to take the design into consideration in case it happened.
Gotcha.
We wanted them to, initially we were like, this seems like a lot, and can you reduce it at all? And they kind of said, no, no, we can't, being a Texas donut. So, so the, the other issue there, that is a zoning issue that ought to be, the commission ought to know, is there are some complications in our code regarding public parking and public parking decks, and using facilities for both private and public uses at the same time. That's something that's come up repeatedly about regarding, like, existing parking surfaces and being able to adaptively use them as throughout the day. So just keep that on your radar.
But didn't we talk to them, I mean, wasn't that at the standard, right? I thought we talked about a certain floor being available to the public for the commercial that's on that...
Commercial uses, yeah, I think it was the ground, the ground floor, because, you know, that loops up and all the residential is above. So the most desirable spaces are probably the ones closest to the doors on that deck. But yeah, we were, we were kind of thinking, you know, at the second floor, if they had an excess of 50 or 100 spaces, that they could potentially block off the upper floors for the private use of the building and open the public. If we allowed it by zoning, they could open the bottom for public and charge.
Do we not allow that by zoning?
It's complicated.
Would you ask?
Do we not allow that by zoning?
Any further questions? Thank you very much. I believe we did have one question for the applicant, if he would come back. I think we want to read your mind about parking. Reverend Eaton, if you would?
So, with residential reserve spots, I'm assuming, what's the, what's the number of public spots that would be available? In particular, looking on Sunday mornings when you have a church right next door?
To, first of all, I don't, it's likely they'll just all be for the residential units.
All of them?
Yeah, they'll be, I mean, that, that's, I mean, that's how the, the formula is one per unit. So I mean, we could talk about, I mean, I don't want to go down that road, but waivers and how to do it, but, and as far as special Sunday provisions, that would just be private conversations with adjacent landowners to figure out how to, how to accommodate that.
So, so all the parking spots would be leased by residents?
I mean, like, you're asking me, like, three years down the road, I, as, I don't, I can't assure you that, again, it depends how many units and how many spaces we do. That's what we're doing at 600 West Main, but then again, we only have 21 spaces onsite and the remainder off, so, and part of why we're having that five-year revisit is, is just again from an urban planning, so I think we tend to overpark, even though there's fear of a migration into local neighborhoods. That's, I disagree that it's all from residents living there, and I believe that's a policing issue and not a, not a development issue, but that's another story. So I think that we're greatly overparking for where we are, and the parking's expensive. And I also think that parking issues come more from poor parking management plans within the city, and it's not, because if you look at the Shenanigans parking lot, I did a parking count. If you look at the Shenanigans parking lot, or the ABC Store parking lot, and you look at the amount of spaces that are available throughout the normal course of a week, we don't have a parking problem in that area, we have a parking use... We have a parking use problem in that area. So, um, the five-year revisit was to, do we really need Jefferson School spots, or are we just taking up more spots? And so you're asking me to look three years down the road when I open this building? I have no idea. I mean, I would say we would want to make it as efficient as possible and not overpark, so, it's the best I got for you.
So what's your plan for the commercial aspect of this, for parking?
Well, I think the, the retail, just by the size of the building, is going to be under the five thousand square feet, so the, the retail would not be required for parking, and it would be dissimilar as, as it's been along West Main. You would just park on the street, or you'd find, you'd find available parking, um, you know, along that, along that corridor.
And I think there was some public comment asking, do you know the sort of retail it might be, restaurant versus store?
No, I have, no, no idea. It won't be a tire store.
Do we have any additional questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll try. Um, since I have some suggested changes. I move to recommend approval of a special use permit allowing the specific development proposed within the application materials for SP nineteen dash two zero 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 three, subject to the following reasonable conditions and safeguards. Those conditions are presented in the staff report with the following changes. In the staff report, there's quite a bit of writing in here, um, so I will limit my revisions to just those that I'm talk, that I would like to see changed. Staff recommendation one B, I would like to change, the building shall not exceed of height of fifty-two feet. And then, under staff recommendation four A, I would like to change this, uh, the second sentence to say, "The baseline survey shall take the form of written descriptions and visual documentation, which shall include color photographs and/or video recordings." And then, under staff recommendation four B, I would like that to read, "The protective plan, the landowner shall engage the engineer who performed the baseline survey to prepare a protective plan to be followed by all persons performing work within the development site. That shall include seismic monitoring or other specific monitoring measures of the adjacent property as recommended by the engineer preparing the protective plan, and minimally include installation of at least five crack monitors that will be inspected weekly during ground disturbing activities during demolition and construction. Reports of monitor readings shall be submitted to the city building official and adjacent landowner within two days of inspection." That is my motion.
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to lament for the last time that we changed our rules, that, you know, such a good site with no historic buildings on it that could have fit a lot of reasonably sized apartments now has to have this, like, dinky little four, maybe five-story building with, like, less apartments, fewer apartments than the one next door. It's a shame.
And I would counter that to say, this is a historic district with a context, context that has a certain height buildings, certain height buildings to it, and building something much larger would destroy the historic character of this district.
Um, and then I just wanted a clarification for one E. Are we leaving the parking requirements as stated?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to move to amend that motion and eliminate that parking requirement, or condition, and let it be governed by the parking ordinance, which I think is, actually, you guys know my feelings about parking ordinance, parking modified zone is a little bit better, but it also, it already provides for quite a bit of parking, probably more than we need. But, and I, I get the concerns about the community, from the community, and I do think it's important, and I think it's a really good idea to have a real plan in place to, to let that pressure off somewhere besides the residential streets. Um, I think this could actually be a good source of revenue for, uh, both the Jefferson School and, I don't know, if I was the church, I might, you know, try to get some money renting out those spots you don't need except on Sundays. But I personally am a car warehouser, um, sorry, Ms. Edwards. The, like, yes, I put my car somewhere, my office, and not on public streets in my case, um, but I don't drive it much, and that is the road to eventually not having a car at all, uh, which for me might come pretty soon, because actually I need a tire store according to my inspection last week. And we're, we're not going to get there by making sure that it's never, ever painful to have a car, and that there's never any inconvenience.
So what was your amendment?
Uh, to remove the requirement for fifty-three onsite parking spots, and implicitly that, the parking ordinance, um, that already provides for parking, stay in place.
Ms. Hunter, are you amending?
No.
No, I'd like to stay with my original motion, please.
Motion stands. Additional discussion?
We're deliberations.
We're deliberations. I'm, I'm actually, Ms. could I get some guidance on this? Is, is that appropriate?
Not typically, but as the chair at this moment, you have some discretion.
I don't see a need currently, but thank you. Additional discussion?
So, sorry, did my amendment die for lack of a second?
It wasn't accepted by the motion, by the person who presented the motion.
So, the current motion stands for now.
Vote against his motion and then resubmit.
If the motion fails.
You can't amend the motion if the person who made the motion doesn't want the amendment.
Well, so, um, Jody, you made the motion. Was there a second to your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then you're right. You are correct. But, once the motion has been seconded, it's up to the entire body to determine. So if Rory makes a motion to amend the motion that's been made and seconded, then you have to have a.
Vote on it.
Vote on the motion.
Somebody has to, if, if there's a second to Rory's motion, then you would vote on that, and if that fails, you go back to the original motion.
Thank you.
Would it anyone second?
I don't, I did not hear a second of Rory's motion yet, but, um, nobody had a chance, because we thought Jody had control of it.
I would entertain a second. Here in no second, I believe the motion dies. Further discussion?
So, just to be clear, we're mandating that there be underground parking spaces for fifty-three units? At thirty-two thousand bucks a pop? I mean, not that I expected these apartments to be cheap either way, but it's not going to help.
Well, I just would like to, um, note again that the conditions as they were drafted were an attempt to reflect what was depicted in the application material. So, it's not exactly that this was being mandated, it's that the conditions reflect the parking plan that came in with the application. However, when the applicants, um, realized that that was something that, that, you know, on an SUP, we would be asking them to conform with the, the illustrations, the exhibits, and the representations of the application materials, they've asked for some additional leeway on the parking condition, because they didn't realize they would be, um, held to that specific design or number, just because they showed it as part of their application materials.
So this provision appears because the applicant put it in the SUP?
Originally, yes. It's my understanding that came from the application materials that were submitted.
And so, I'm looking at, I don't know, this piece of paper that I guess they handed out just now, and it's got, I guess, forty parking spots. Does that mean they would have to remove the bike storage, or the stormwater facilities, or just make all the parking spots smaller? Or dig down further?
It would have to be designed per standard, so, you know, they have to adjust as needed.
They're not going to fit. Fifty-three is not going to fit.
At this time, I don't think that's our job to decide how it's going to fit and how it's going to work. That's what was presented to us, and I think that's what we should vote on.
All right. Additional discussion? Let's, uh, call a vote. Ms. Green?
Hold on, did you still have a question?
Well, are you saying we're voting on an application, on a permit that the applicant is saying is not going to conform to the drawing that we're voting on? Do you, okay.
Well, it ha, if you approve it, the site plan has to conform with what's in the SUP. So what, what we're saying is that it's, it's, has not been unusual, one way or another, for you all to say when somebody submits an application that includes, as the ordinance requires, a site plan exhibit, that someone is representing to you what the specific development is, so that you can come up with conditions that, um, are appropriate. So you have to have details. So if the applicant submits something to you, you're entitled to rely on it. What this applicant is now saying through Mr. Lopez, that they, is that they gave you something that cannot be developed as they represented it. It was intended to be more of a concept drawing rather than more of a site plan exhibit as the ordinance, that's actually, um, the word site plan is used in our ordinance. So, uh, nobody expects them to have a site plan done at the time they, completely done, at the time they come within a special use permit, but your ordinance does require that a certain amount of, um, development of the design concept be completed when they come in on an SUP.
Have we done a calculation based on, I guess this is the current design, and this is where I get frustrated every time we have one of these, when we have a box, because we don't really know what the heck we're voting on. We're changing the land law of this land based off of a big square box. Has anybody had any kind of calculation done, other than the applicant, I'm talking about within the zoning ordinance, within what, the requirements we have? Because those requirements are put into place for understanding bedrooms, uh, commercial, um, parking, and, you know, for, for the area that is proposed, so that we are not going to have an impact on the neighborhoods. Is there a, is there a number that we've come up with based off of what we have now? Is forty right? Does forty work for those amount of apartments? We don't really know, because we don't know the bedrooms, right? And it says, we don't know the layout. Hang on, let me finish this. We don't know the layout of these apartments. We don't know if it's one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. We don't know if they're penthouse apartments, so I get two per floor. We don't know what it is. What, I mean, what's our best guess when we're doing this application, as opposed to, I mean, there's got to be some scientific method to this based off of something we've got approved in our ordinance right now. What is that?
In, I think in, in the planning world with parking, I think the, the scientific calculation is, if you build it, they will come. If you provide the parking, people will use it for the most part, and if you don't provide it, they'll find other means. The thing that I would point out is, our parking regulations are a minimum. If an applicant feels, or developer feels, that the minimum does not suit their project, they're certainly available to provide more. But, you know, in terms of where a lot of cities are going right now, they're not, you know, they're not, they're reducing their minimums in part to allow the free market to decide how much parking is out there, but also, if they're mandating a large amount of parking, it's typically driving up the cost of the units, and if you have a space per unit, those, those spaces get, get rented. You know, the cost of that space gets put in the rent whether the person wanting to rent that unit has a car or not.
So, wouldn't you not consider this application that we have before us an amendment to the original application? And I guess, why wouldn't you change in the staff report for it to go from fifty-three to forty?
Because we received this after we sent the staff report out.
I think a better question is, why are we changing it from whatever the zoning ordinance, the, the, like, thing that we sat down in the abstract and said, what's the right amount of parking that we need to make sure that people require? And we're raising that to fifty-thirty.
We don't know that. I don't have an answer from planning or zoning about what would be required from this project. I have, at both times, what the applicant presented, but I don't have anything based off of the ordinance that is written that is our standard that we go by.
Well, I don't think any, I don't think anyone can say what a development is going to need for parking based until they have, until we know who's living there. Are they taking the bus? Are they, are they walking to work?
But we do this all the time, Brian, we do this all the time. People come to us all the time. We don't get a roster of who's going to move in there. So all the time, we get some kind of guidance on a parking calculation. For, why can't I get a parking calculation? Or we get a parking calculation on what this part, what, what is needed for this project before us.
Because they haven't laid out the interior of the building.
Have they told you, what's the parking standard based on? Is it units or bedrooms?
Units.
How many units?
So we have fifty-five dwelling units, no more than fifty-five dwelling units.
So no more than fifty-five parking spaces.
So, this drawing ostensibly based on the units represented in the application is the minimum number of parking spaces required for those units.
With, yeah, with parking reductions based on proximity to a bus stop, most likely.
So, they submitted an application with an illustration saying they meet the minimum parking requirements, and they're asking you now to reduce those.
Without amending the application before they came back here to it?
No, the, well, the, they, the, the illustration that they had showed meeting a hundred percent of their required number onsite. As you know, in this corridor, they have a number of options as to how they can meet their spaces. So they showed fifty-three spaces onsite. They could do forty onsite, thirteen offsite. That's an option to them under the zoning ordinance now.
Got it.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be on this project?
Correct. It doesn't have to be on the site, yes.
That's, that's the issue raised by this condition. So, what Rory's issue is, is not whether or not it's fifty-five total, it's really whether it's fifty-five on the site, which is what the application materials submitted in the exhibit.
But we're not requiring fifty-three onsite.
Well, that's what the application material shows, so that's how the conditions were drafted. If you all would like to do what Rory was suggesting, saying it has to still be one space per unit, but those number of onsite spaces can be, um, reduced if offsite is provided in accordance with your ordinance. That's just what the ru, the regular rules are.
Well, it seems to me.
But what we try to do, because over the years, we've had a significant amount of trouble of, of exhibits and drawings changing between the time you think you know what you're approving and the time a site plan comes in, that we have been working really hard to give you a set of conditions that accurately represent what the exhibits are within the application materials that come in. These application materials showed fifty-five spaces onsite, but nobody on staff, what I'm, what I'm hearing from staff is nobody on staff is necessarily tied to that. If it would be better to provide flexibility to simply provide parking in accordance with the ordinance, that's fine. That's just not exactly what was represented in the application materials.
I have, just kind of a procedural question for just, let me, bear with me. So if I'm an applicant, and I bring a drawing, and I say, this is what I want to do. By the way, I still always recommend that we have a work session, so we can hash this out before you set up here. Hang on.
We're on the schedule for work.
Which we did, kind of last month. So what does it take then for an applicant to change the application before it gets back here, before we vote? What is the process for them to be able to do that? Because forty is what we saw last time, right?
No.
No.
No, at the last hearing?
The, the forty is the new submission, and that came in after you had your discussion last time.
But then after we had that discussion, and we had these conversations about parking, there's, there can't be a change? And the applicant can't come in and go, "I heard what the planning commission said, I wanna change this." There can't be that?
It can be, but the last time when you were here, you all said you didn't want to change the fifty-five.
I got you.
So they are asking, they submitted a request asking that you consider changing the parking um to ref- to what's shown in the exhibit that's come in, and that's, that's fine. But last time, you told them that you wouldn't consider changing that.
We also told them to stop bringing us up the day of our meetings, too.
So, to make sure I'm completely understanding this correctly, in either case, they have to provide fifty-five spots, one per unit minus two, cause they're three hundred feet of a bus stop, so fifty-three spots, and then.
Under the ordinance.
Under the ordinance.
Yep, and then, so with condition one E, it needs to be an underground parking, in an underground parking structure with all of those spots. And under the ordinance, they still have to provide that many spots, but they're allowed to go down the street to, I don't know, maybe the big M-Track lot that's always empty, or the Jeff School, and rent spots? But they have to submit proof that they did that to count?
That's what, um, offsite parking or shared parking, whatever it's called in the ordinance, that's how you do it. You have to demonstrate um cooperative agreements that are long-term.
Actually, if I, um, Mr. Haleska, um, is, is there a, a public benefit to onsite versus uh offsite in this area?
I mean, certainly there is, we, we've heard from the, the surrounding neighborhoods that there is a tremendous amount of pressure on the existing on-street s- spaces, particularly off of West Main. Um, some of that's probably driven by construction and people who are not, you know, living in the area but coming in for construction work. Typically, you know, because those sites are blocked off for construction, there's no parking on those, and those construction vehicles go all over the place on parking in front of people's houses. So there's some of that, but we've also heard that this has been an ongoing thing over many years. So any new space adds to the inventory on that corridor. If they're using offsite spaces, those spaces are existing, so you're not increasing your inventory, you're just increasing the utilization of it. So that could be perceived as a public benefit. Um, it's also a multimodal corridor that, you know, has pedestrians and bikes, so, you know, the more we accommodate cars, the more cars you're gonna get.
But I would point out that we have a use next door that's a congregation with no lot for that church, and they rent from uh surrounding lots. That now will be competing against this development for the same parking spaces.
And we did a West Main parking study a few years back, right?
Yes, the city did a West Main parking study, yes.
What were the?
I mean, the big takeaway of that was the, the, I think the recommendation in that study was for another structured parking facility on West Main Street, as, you know, a public structured parking to, uh, in part because, you know, the West Main streetscape plan proposed the removal of spaces. So there was sort of trying to look at how do you replace that?
That isn't getting funded anytime soon, I take it?
I can't comment on funding priorities from council, it's been above my pay grade.
Additional discussion on this item? I believe we're ready to vote, uh, Ms. Green?
Uh, a procedural order, I think Ms. Creasy calls roll.
Oh, thank you, that's wonderful.
Mr. Laandro?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
No.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
Ms. Green?
Aye.
And Mr. Solly Yates?
No.
Four-two.
I believe the motion passes, thank you. I believe a five-minute recess is in order?
Yeah, this is bad.
I blame myself.
Nope. Yep, signs are still the planning commission.
Lisa never had a problem like this.
That's cause Lisa was Lisa. Yeah, I'm me, she's her, she's like. Let's go, Bill. Drag, drag Lisa with you when you can.
Oh, my goodness.
Alrighty, I am gaveling us into the ERB session. We, um, we have a, we have a very brief and net staff report.
I want more red.
Uh, I'm just handing out the, I printed out the spreadsheet large so everyone can see it, if that's of any assistance to anyone. We can keep track of the score as we have this discussion. Mr. Chair, I, I, how much, like, it's a lengthy staff report, I know you all have a pretty good description of it. I'll just, I'll give a, a quick rundown, and then if you've got any questions, we can go from there. This is a request for a comprehensive signage plan uh for the Hillsdale Place Shopping Center, which is where the old Kmart, Gold's Gym, used to be located. It is within the Route twenty-nine north and also in the hydraulic road entrance corridors. The plan is for the approximately eighty-seven thousand square foot building to be reused um for ten tenants, anchored on the west end by a forty thousand square foot store, and on the east by a twenty thousand square foot store. You all approved the design for this earlier this summer. The applicant is requesting approval of a comprehensive signage plan, and I'll, you'll hear me say CSP. And it will be applied to the building signage for the ten anticipated tenants, and includes three monument signs out on the, the hydraulic and on twenty-nine. And I know that this is probably the first comprehensive signage plan you all have dealt with. We've, we haven't had, um, we have one other in um Barrick Road Shopping Center, but that went through, I think, before an ordinance change. So um, this is a bit of a new process, uh, at least certainly for me. So we'll walk through it together, but, uh, so what happens when there's a development that has, is subject to a site plan review and design review? The applicant may request approval of a comprehensive signage plan, which is defined as a written plan detailing the type, quantity, size, shape, color, and location of all signs within the development that are, and that is subject to the plan, and where the number, characteristics, and other locations of the signs referenced within the plan do not comply with the requirements of the city code regarding signs. And per city code, council may approve a comprehensive signage plan upon a determination that there is good cause for deviating from strict application of the requirements of the code, and that the comprehensive signage plan as proposed will serve the public purposes and objectives at least as well, or better than the signage that would otherwise be permitted um by right. So, and just one quick footnote on this, there is, uh, Hillsdale Place is on, facing north, is on the west side of Hillsdale Drive. On the east is the Whole Foods Store, but they are all part of the same parcel. However, there's a comprehensive signage plan already in place for the Whole Foods, um, and that will remain in place. And the only thing that the Whole Foods, uh, the connection is, is there, they will be allowed um space on the, the monument sign. So, very quickly, the code identifies nine signage types. Very quickly, uh, awning or canopy signs, this uh plan, it proposes those, and they are, what's proposed appears consistent with code. Freestanding signs, none are proposed in this plan. Marquee signs, none are proposed, and when I say none are proposed, that means if not in the plan, they are not permitted. Monument signs, uh, as I said, there are three monument signs, they are consistent with the code. Pole-mounted signs, there are none in the plan, therefore none are permitted. Projecting signs, uh, the proposed conditions um are consistent with the provisions of the code, except, um, and I'll get into the spreadsheet where the buy right uh is thirty, but within an entrance corridor, uh, the square footage drops to fifteen. Sandwich board signs, uh, the allowed, we, talking it over with the zoning um director. We are not going to permit those in the sense of they won't require a permit or review by us. However, the owners agree that they will only be placed on the sidewalk that is in front of the storefronts, and they must be removed after hours. And while we won't regulate those, um, any signs that don't comply with that, that are left out at night, or there are in other places on the property, we would view that as a, as a violation of the comprehensive signage plan. Temporary signage, there are some provisions in the code for various types of temporary signs. By reference to the code, they'll be allowed, and then wall signs, and this is where uh the CSP gets, gets complicated. It's uh, the, there's several places within the elevations where they've indicated signage may go, and there's also um some different sizes and heights, and so we'll discuss that um in the recommendations. So, quickly, um, relative to the code requirements, um, the comprehensive, comprehensive signage plan, as I said, will serve public purpose and objectives, et cetera, and I'll summarize that in a second. Code also says each application for approval of a comprehensive, of a CSP shall include the following information. A written narrative of the overall plan, we have that. Color illustrations or photographs of each sign, uh, we have information, uh, color illustrations aren't provided, and that's understandable because um they don't have the tenants yet. However, the comprehensive signage plan does limit the signage to no more than two colors. The code requires a written description of the type, size, dimensions, materials, et cetera, of the um, the proposed location of each sign. That information was provided. Code requires a map or written identification, description of the existing signs on the property. There are no existing signs, uh, so that provision's not applicable. Color illustrations or photographs of signage on existing or, uh, on, existing on adjacent parcels, uh, that information was provided. And finally, a written description um of, of the proposed lighting uh for the signage, and that information was, was provided. So the staff summary uh said there's basically two provisions that were deviates in the code. One is in the aggregate signage area. Per the code, the maximum signage area within an entrance corridor is seventy-five square feet per parcel. Now, this is in a shopping center, and staff, uh, zoning staff has applied that condition to, uh, as a per-tenant maximum. And so you, as outlined here, as originally proposed, all of the tenants exceeded that seventy-five square foot um maximum. Wall signage, there are code limits as far as a sign cannot be twenty feet above grade. Uh, there are three locations on this plan where a, a sign may be allowed up to twenty-eight feet. And also, I, uh, there, on the elevations, there are five areas noted for these taller signs, with the understanding that only three signs can be used uh in those locations. So they have an option of five places, but there can only be three of them used. Finally, the uh, staff supports, what did I say here? Sorry. Right, as far as the higher uh elevation, so there's the one place at the shopping center tower in the middle. Uh, that's the central uh component of the, of the parapet, and um it's generally aligns with the um, the higher signage that's at the east, or I'm sorry, at the west end. And at the west end, where, where all the red is, is, is actually fifteen feet lower than the grade of twenty-nine, so that that higher elevation of the sign is actually, it, it works out pretty cleanly. And then just sort of following that line all the way down the length of the, of the store to the eastern end, we feel that the twenty-eight foot uh condition at those three locations is okay. Relative to the entrance corridor design guidelines for signs. Place signs so they do not obstruct architectural elements, this complies. Respect the design, visibility of signs for adjacent businesses, this complies. Use colors appropriate and appropriate materials that complement the materials and the color scheme of the building. Per the plan, the tenants are only allowed two colors for their types of sign. The, and the building owner, development owner will be reviewing that now. And also the monument signs, the three monument signs will mimic the elements that are already approved for the building and the colors. It says use a minimal number of colors per sign, again, they're limited to two. Exterior illumination of signs shall comply with the city's outdoor lighting regs, they do. Illumination of any signs should not be directed toward any residential area or adjacent street. Plan complies. Our guidelines say consider using a comprehensive signage plan for large developments and that's what's before you. Encourage the use of monument signs rather than freestanding signs with accent landscapes. And of course, that's included. Internally lit signs should have an opaque background so only the letters are lit. You know, the appearing white at night, this plan complies. Flashing lights are prohibited and the plan complies. So finally, recommendations. Upon reviewing the proposed plan, staff believes that the condition of the proposed CSP are appropriate and we support recommendation approval with the following conditions. And I know they're in the staff report. The, bless you. The revise the plan to clarify that condition I said about that while there are five locations identified for twenty-eight foot signs, that only three signs may be located in any of those five locations noted. Revise the conditions regarding the sandwich board signs to indicate that while such signs will not require permits, they must still comply with the provisions of a section of the code that I have stated here. There is some discussion about, there are certain definitions and certain general requirements for signage and staff suggested they be applied by reference. And I'm going to talk to Lisa Robertson if she has a different way that she'd like that to be stated. But that would, by stating these sections of the code on this date are applicable to this comprehensive signage plan, that would help staff in the future. And then finally, to the chart that you all have. And this is where, if I can just walk you through how I got here. Simply looking at the tenants two through nine. I didn't put in here the length of the building front. But for wall signs, it's one linear, or one square foot per linear foot with a max of fifty square feet in entrance corridor, that's cut in half. So twenty-five feet is the max if you get there. But otherwise, these are what the code would allow. Canopy signs, again, that's the one square foot per linear foot with a max of twenty square feet. There is no cutting in half for entrance corridor. For projecting signs, the code is not to exceed thirty feet with the area cut in half for entrance corridor, giving you the fifteen square feet. And little unclear in the code how to apply the under canopy signs, but we were okay with the four. The result is, as you can see, that the, while there's a seventy-five square foot aggregate that's allowed in entrance corridor, the result for tenants two through nine is slightly lower. The applicant has suggested maybe the, they be allowed the seventy-five square foot max for all of those smaller tenants. You all can discuss that. My only suggestion would be that there at least be some cap on the individual signage types. So that, you know, not all seventy-five feet is allocated simply to one large wall sign. However, unrealistic that may be. So that would be my recommendation in the conversations. But I think there's room for discussion here and I'll stop there and ask if you have any questions.
Mr. Latra. Any questions? Tony?
No, not yet.
Okay, wow, you're right.
Yes. So how do dark skies, best practices and lit signs mesh, or do they?
How do they mesh? All right, I'm going to say, right up front, the zoning administrator, not correct. The zoning administrator was hoping he was going to be here tonight to help with code. I am not an expert on the signage code. So in conversation with him, we're, I will say, we're comfortable with how all that is met relative to the signage. Now, lighting, things like that, parking lot lighting, that's different, but that is all subject to the ordinance. But we're confident with what they've stated and what I've recommended be added relative to these code references, takes care of all that stuff. Thank you.
Ramon.
No questions.
No questions.
But I do. I have several questions. This is just from my own curiosity, I think it's interesting. You said if the applicants or storefronts were to put out their sandwich board signs and leave them out all night, they'd be in violation of the comprehensive plan sign package. What exactly does that mean? Take the sign, do they not get any more signs, they have to remove signs? What's the enforcement on that?
That's a great, yeah, well, the enforcement would be, you know, as I say, again, Mr. Broadhead, we're here. He was amenable to that. It's what they've done at Barracks Road, they're somewhat self-governed over there and haven't had any problems with it.
I understand that, that's my question. What happens? No idea.
My understanding is it'd be a zoning violation.
And then what?
I'm not the zoning administrator, I'm sorry, can't answer.
So, second thing.
Likely the, if someone were to go out there, the sign would be acquired and the applicant would be called and told that there's signs there if they want to come pick it up and to not do it again.
Are there fines?
There can be fines.
How, when's the last time we fined anyone?
I don't recall.
That's what I thought, okay, just checking. Secondly, I hate empty, you know, yeah, don't worry, you'll be in violation of what. So, secondly, based on this comp plan signage package and all these beautiful red lines around the proposed facade and building locations, right? This, yeah, based off of that.
I was thinking elevations.
Right, elevations?
Yeah, so on the plan, right.
Based on the plan, page two. It appears that these signs are requested and this, this.
Spreadsheet, table.
Spreadsheet, so the CSP, this is what they want and staff, this is what you're saying they can have?
Correct, yes ma'am.
Okay. Okay, I'm not trying to talk.
As long as you hear the voices too, I'm okay.
I do. I'm not sure what's happening. No, I don't want Google Assistant. God, stop it. I don't know what is happening. There we go, so sorry it's talking to me, voices in my head. So if we are looking at, come back to me. If we are looking at this, this plan, we are looking at this. Are these requi, these requests, these larger requests, the CSP requests, which is what we're voting on tonight, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, a recommendation to council.
Recommendation to council, correct. So, and that's based off of all these red lines around this building?
It's primarily based on, and the real key to this, it's the same thing we did it for, what's done at Barracks Road, are these elevations. They are.
Okay, fine, it's based off the elevations.
Yeah, that's the key.
Let me go.
All right.
What happens after I use all my numbers here and I decide to add one of these five future buildings? Does that mean those buildings get no signage?
We had discussions with that and the, couple ways to handle it. One was, I think at Barracks Road, there was a comment of any future outbuildings not covered in this would be subject to the standard signage regs. One could be simply, you need to amend your comprehensive signage plan, which is how it's worded now. And that was the applicant's decision to leave those out. So yes, they would have to come back and amend the comprehensive signage plan to accommodate any different, anything different than what is specifically shown.
Which would increase these numbers more?
It would because, in the sense of having additional tenant, right, yeah.
And how does this proposal compare to, like, the Whole Foods location? I mean, they seem to be doing fine with that small sign.
Can't answer that as far as.
I don't think they're selling any more fish sticks there because of the large sign.
This is, you are absolutely right. And we had a meeting with the guy who's the new manager of the Barracks Road for Federal Realty and, you know, I asked him, he goes, I've been retail forty years, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I said, all right, let me ask you this, what's up with signs? I said, you know, I don't go anywhere because their sign's bigger. I don't, certainly don't stop on 29 and go, oh my God, I gotta buy a mattress that's on sale today. You know, I said, he goes, you're absolutely right. He says, that's not what draws people. And he says, but every single person that I talk to wants to have space in our store, the first thing they ask is what's the signage space I'm allowed? He said, so, you know, real and fiction, the truth is that that's what the tenants first asked about. And as, again, you know, as we discussed earlier tonight, somewhat why we're here in accommodating some specific requests for particular tenants possibly. But I, what, the key to this plan is that that chart, that table, applies to tenants that are identified in the plan. We know one through ten, these say where these signs can be. So there is a, so if tenant number three here with a twenty foot width comes in and says, I'm going to put in a sign, first off, they would have to have an application signed by the owner. So we know that the owner has said, that's acceptable to me. We would then say, well, all right, your max for that and you already got two other signs, we can't issue a permit for another one. So it would, there would be almost a checklist for each one. That's how it seems to have been handled out at Barracks Road. I'll be honest, I mean, looking at the Barracks Road sign, signage plan, which was approved, I think, in ten or eleven years ago. I mean, and so much has changed out there that the plan has, you know, there's been evolution. So my concern is that these are, these plans go through this process, but they become pretty rigid. And, but applicants are willing to do it and I think in my review, I think this one's reasonable. So, sorry, hope that answers questions.
Mr. Stolzberg.
No questions.
Mr. Palmer. Would the applicant like to tell us? Sorry, are you back?
Yeah, seconds. I've come up with a question. I'm just trying to understand this spreadsheet you have.
Boy, I thought I simplified it.
Okay, so am I reading this correctly in that the total area, the aggregate area that the, the comprehensive signage plan is requesting is one thousand three hundred and forty-eight square feet?
Okay.
And that the staff, what is staff?
Current code, correct, Jeff?
Or what our staff.
Current code requirements.
All right, but then what is by code then on the last column?
Well, by code is, was, so I, when I say staff, that's when I went through and said, all right, what do I get, what do I get, what do I get? Maxima, aggregate at the end. It just, the code says seventy-five square feet, so that wasn't me, you know, doing math.
So a total of each location, so there are different signage allowances for different types of sign for location, but they can't equal up to more than seventy-five square feet total.
However, right.
Per the code. So, so he's, he and Reed have taken the, taken it, each sign individually and then they've noted here at the end, the code denotes, and I think that title over there should not necessarily be staff, but I'm not sure there.
So I'm just trying to get to, what is it that the comprehensive signage plan is requesting and what is it that code allows?
Okay, it's, first off, take the first column, wall signs. So we're CSP, that is what their plan came in with and.
So that's the applicant request, let's be succinct. CSP means applicant request.
Correct.
Staff means what is allowed in the entrance corridor by code.
Right.
Okay.
And so then, right, then taking simply the wall signs, canopy signs, and projecting sign by, based on what the code says. Now, the thing is, they didn't reach seventy-five, right.
So the applicant is requesting one thousand three hundred and forty-eight square feet of signage and the code allows nine hundred and seven square feet?
The code allows seven hundred and fifty because each location would only get seventy-five total.
If they reached that much.
Right.
So they're requesting twice as much as what code allows?
Well then, so then if staff was by code, but we have a column for by code, so what is the staff?
Okay, one more time, maybe I can, maybe I can do it, we'll see. All right, so each sign type has different allowances. So if you take each, each one individually, the code gives you different allowances. They may equal up to more than the seventy-five, but you can't have more than seventy-five per, per site.
So there's a cap.
Right, yeah, so that's why it's a, it's a little confusing because each different type may have, has a specific number and it may add up to something that's not seventy-five, but you can't have more than seventy-five.
Or it may not add up to seventy-five, as in this case.
Right, I can clearly read a chart, I want to know what the title staff means then. So if by code is by code, then what are the numbers under staff?
So what you have is, is a comprehensive signage plan is by its definition, it's almost, forget about what the code says, this is what the applicant would like to do in lieu of. And so the, so part of our response to that is to say, all right, how does your request, knowing that it differs from what's allowed, required by code, what are the circumstances that we think are acceptable in that, for that excess? What are the things that we think would balance that out? And so what I did is I understood that the two anchor tenants were really key in driving some of the requests here. That, that, having a comprehensive signage plan was helpful and having the two anchors was what was necessary. What was in between then, I worked backwards with the zoning folks.
Okay, so Jeff, so Jeff, this line is what they're requesting. The yellow categories are staff recommendation based on the concept as a whole. And then when you get to this category over here, this gives the by code and this gives the staff recommendation based on the proposal that's been provided.
Thank you.
Voila.
That's right, it's wasted Sunday.
It takes lots of, it takes lots of brains.
Well, I think I'm pretty succinct, but I, it's all right.
So you think they want thirteen forty-eight. Code says seven fifty, but you think based off of what we got, they could do it in nine oh seven? It's a simple yes or no question. Don't go it, it's simple yes or no.
The answer is yes because the number that we're trying to get to.
It's okay to say yes or no.
Is four forty-one, that is the number that we're dealing with. Thirteen minus nine oh seven is four forty-one. And that is the delta we're trying to close.
Correct, correct. And I felt like what I, we could do is, the overall, looking at this thing in a whole, in total, by some adjustments in the tenants in between, allow the, the overall to work better. And then understanding that the, a lot of this is occurring on the two ends of the building. So these larger tenants have two sides that they're putting signs on. It was a judgment on my part in how to make this, I think, acceptable. And, but again, it's certainly, the applicant can make their case and you all can.
So I guess the question that I've got, forgive me for jumping ahead of you, Rory. As a matter of fact, why don't you go ahead?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so I just have a question about how signage area is measured. So if hypothetically, they wanted to put up a sign that was circular, is that measured by, you know, the height times the width? So, if hypothetically, they wanted to put up a sign that was circular, um, is that measured by, you know, the height times the width, or is that pi R squared?
It's gonna be the area.
Yeah, I, again, I...
The actual area? Okay.
I'm not gonna be able to say chapter and verse.
It's the, it's the area, if it's, if it's a block letter situation, then it's a block around the letter generally.
Yeah, you can't cut the, the, the empty spaces out, you, it's, it's, uh, the, not lifting up the pen.
It's the outline, but it's not necessarily rectangular.
How are logos measured?
Uh, my understanding, because I did ask that, is that, um, I mean, there's all kinds, you took calculus.
Like a bullseye, how would you measure that?
Well, it's, if it's, if it's a sign, it is that area, but like, let's say it's letters, so it'd be, you know, that outline without lifting up the pen, so to speak, and that. So, for example, like Mud House has this really funky, uh, I don't even, you know, T-shaped thing, you know, it's, it's, you know, some heavy math. I don't know, there's a sign over on Tenth Street that... Yeah, yeah, something not near yours.
So, this is, um, this is really, really complicated for me.
You, amen.
But, but, yeah, I think the number that we're working with again is four forty-one.
Wait, you have four forty-one?
Yeah, four forty-one.
That's the difference.
That's the delta.
Three, nine oh seven, and here.
Yeah, that's, that's the difference between the number they're asking for, and the number I think you're comfortable with.
I, I heard a longer number, yes.
So, my question is, how comfortable are you with that delta? Is that delta so significant that you're not happy with it, and we need to do more work? Or do the things that you talked about in the recommendation help mitigate?
To me, it, because of the, you know, what's, what's most compelling about this is that, that sort of three sides of a shopping center, a large block that we're talking about, and we're using all of that to sort of distribute the signage. That's where I felt okay. Knowing that, A, you know, if you just took a store, you know, if you, you know, threw out the fifty-square-foot thing, and just said, you know, one, for every linear foot, you get a square foot of wall sign, you know, that's, that's an awful lot. So, I sort of worked to that, from that one-to-one ratio backwards, and ended up with below a one-to-one, and I could live with that, knowing that we had eliminated some types of signs that we weren't getting. I think some of the, um, to me, reducing the projecting signs, you know, big giant blades on the side of a building, uh, that's to me how, where I felt most comfortable. But again, remember that the, this is a, the whole point of this is to say, we, this isn't following regs, this is different from the code. It's kind of odd to say, why am I, you know, how does not following the code do a better job than the code? But I think that, a better way to say it is, how do we accommodate the amount of signage they're looking for in this space in a way that, um, spatially, it's, uh, it's distributed, it's not overwhelming, and, and that's, that's my judgment.
This was done with extensive collaboration with the zoning staff, who review all of the sign permits for the entire city, and they're constantly reviewing different sign packages that are going through the city in, in a variety of places. And so, they have that overall perspective of the general feel for the city as a whole. Um, but in this case, you know, we're able to provide insight on something that, you know, gives more of a balance, um, to the request that was being provided.
So, just for clarity, there, the applicant is requesting thirteen forty-eight, but you feel more comfortable, and I think this is a role you're in, so we're looking for guidance from you.
I could...
At nine oh seven.
Yeah, and, and I, you know, the understanding that, um, you don't wanna necessarily look to penalize the, the, the interior tenants, because of what maybe is allocated to the larger places, and that's why in, in my conversation with the applicant, uh, I, you know, I think it would take some internal discussion before it goes to the, to the city council on this, but I think that if a seventy-five-foot max were allowed for the smaller tenants in between, knowing that that exceeds, that, you know, we're already exceeding it on the one and ten, but allowing seventy-five feet max to interior tenants would exceed what, uh, the individual signage, uh, requirements add up to. I think that would be okay if there were some caps put on, particularly the wall, canopy, and projecting signs. Not that it's a seventy-five, whatever you want to do.
And is that in your, uh, recommended approval motion?
No, no, this was a conversation that, um, uh, prior, and I think the applicant is going to mention this, uh, that, what they'd like to see, so I was just giving it some thought in advance.
So, you didn't add any co, uh, recommended conditions?
No, no, well, I have conditions in there.
Well, yeah, we've got a number of recommendations.
Yeah, number, but the, but the seventy-five...
It sounds like that conversation took place after the information was provided.
Yeah, it may be helpful when we get there, to have you re, re, reword that for us, that recommendation, so we can...
Yeah, it's just that when, when, you know, the applicant saw the staff report and the recommendations, they're like, "And as L mentioned, we would like this." And I said, "Well, then you can raise that with, um, the plan," which...
Would you, would you guys like to speak with the applicant?
Sure. Now, I just say, what, what's really, I will say, the helpful thing about these plans, and what actually is helpful with this chart and the elevations, is that when people come in with an application for a sign, it gives zoning staff that instruction on, you know, can, you know, boom, 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 it's a checklist for them to use, so, all right.
Think about that recommendation, so you can, you can begin wording it for us.
I can begin what?
Wording it.
Wording the recommendation for us, the last recommendation that you made, think about it, so you can help us word it.
Okay, I will.
So, before I get started, can we get the projector going on the screen, in case we wanna reference any of these drawings? Good evening, everyone, Ashley Davies, Riverbend Development. I was here just a few months ago when we were looking at the entrance corridor. Like, you're done!
Too slow.
That was great. All right, um, we reviewed the entrance corridor package for this development, and I just wanted to pull that up, because, um, it, it at least gives you an idea of what this building looks like with some of the wall signage on there. Although, as, um, Jeff stated in our presentation, that everything will appear lit white at night, so, um, that's a little bit off-base. But, um, the intent of the comprehensive signage package that we've provided is to really, um, create a document and a code that is specific to this shopping center, of which there are not that many shopping centers in the city of Charlottesville, but, um, when you have one, such as Seminole Square or Barracks Road, they do each have their own comprehensive signage package. So, it creates a really harmonious environment within the development, and as Jeff alluded to, um, really, one of the main reasons to do that is if you have, um, a site of this size and nature, where you might need, um, some flexibility in the code to suit the specific needs of someone, such as an anchor tenant, that, um, isn't your, your standard Charlottesville store. If you look through the existing Charlottesville signage ordinance, it's really geared towards smaller parcels with one tenant. I mean, if you even look at the illustrations, it looks like a small shop on the downtown mall. So, um, less conducive to, um, say, a forty thousand square foot anchor that has, you know, over, um, six hundred linear feet of frontage. So, um, I, I think what these pictures show in our entrance corridor package is that, um, the architecture's been carefully designed. In the comprehensive signage plan, we show very specifically the areas where the tenants might choose to place their sign, and so we're trying to get them flexibility on locations, but in almost every case, um, within the comprehensive signage plan, we've copied what is the standard by right allowance throughout Charlottesville for the sign types. So, the sign types that we're allowing, um, for everyone except for the anchor tenants, it really is copying all those by right standards into our code. And so, the real deviations that you're gonna see are in, um, the anchor tenants, because those stores are so large, allowing, um, s- some more wall signage, and, and then there's one spot in the middle, um, that's not shown on this rendering, but that gives the possibility for a, um, shopping center sign on that middle architectural feature. So, you know, a- and I, I didn't, unfortunately, Jeff and I met, uh, many times, and so we added, I mean, we really had a lot of back and forth on this, and, um, he had some great suggestions to clarify our code, but, um, so you'll see as you go throughout it, for each of the sign types, we created a chart that shows the maximum allotment for each of the tenants, and, um, but I unfortunately did not get to see Jeff's chart prior to the staff report being released. So, when we saw that, that really, um, made a lot of deviations from what we proposed to you in our comprehensive signage plan. And, um, you know, I think that when you look at it as a whole, um, it's, you're not gonna see, we're not gonna allow tenants to do five different sign types. Um, we, you know, we're, we're designing, um, what we think is a really nice commercial center, and we wanna keep it looking nice, but we wanted to at least give the standard provisions from the code for each sign type to allow the flexibility of choice for which sign best suits each of the tenants. But, you know, I think one thing that Jeff brought up, um, is the projecting signs, which, um, like I said, we copied that directly from the Charlottesville code, all those provisions, and right now, the city allows a maximum of a thirty-square-foot projecting sign. I don't see anywhere on this development that we're going to actually need a thirty-square-foot projecting sign. So, if that type of compromise, like taking it down to a potential of fifteen square feet per tenant, helps in the decision-making process, I think that's something that we're amenable to. But really, the reality of this center, as Jeff mentioned, is that it's fifteen feet below grade on the twenty-nine side. It's hundreds of feet from most of the public right-ofways. Um, it's over two hundred feet from twenty-nine, it's over three hundred feet, um, from the hydraulic frontage. So, um, I don't agree with penalizing the middle tenants. What we're really looking for is, um, giving something unique to those anchor locations, because those are what gonna, are gonna drive the success of the entire shopping center. Um, so I don't think by doing that, you should make what the middle tenants are doing smaller, because they are so far from that hydraulic frontage. But I think in many cases, you've got, um, for the smaller tenants, they're only, you know, eighteen to twenty feet wide, so there's really, if you look at those squares on the plan, there's really not that much room to even provide signage there. So, the signs aren't gonna be very large, and, um, for any of, like, the under-canopy signs, those are listed at as, as a maximum of four square feet if people choose to do them. So, those are more like, if you're walking along Barracks Road, they're kind of more for the pedestrian level if there's a canopy, but those aren't even visible from the right-ofway at all. So, you know, I think the main deal for the retail tenants are the wall signs, and having some vis- visibility of those. And then the rest of them are just copying the code and providing some flexibility to, um, what the tenants choose. But, um, I'm happy to, you know, provide more information, or I have the comp signage plan up here, if there's anything you all wanna go through. We did debate about the future tenants, and, um, because that site plan hasn't been designed, and we don't know what we'll be facing then, we felt like it was better to just come forward with an amendment at that time versus trying to account for any, um, possibility that might come up in the future, but, um, so that's how we came to that agreement. But as you see, I mean, we really do kinda take it, um, using the, um, the code standards that are in the regular sign ordinance, and just pull it out for each of the ones that we are interested in, and we were trying, we tried to be very clear where we had any deviations from a standard by right allotment in the code, but I think, you know, um, also, we're fine for any of the tenants, um, two through nine, having that maximum of seventy-five square feet that the zoning ordinance gives to, um, any other standard tenant in the entrance corridor. Um, so it's really, um, those deviations to accommodate the larger anchors in the, in the shopping center.
One of the things that you said bothers me, though, in that you think it's appropriate for the smaller stores to be able to put the kind of large signage necessary to be seen from twenty-nine. I, I disagree with that, I think that then is out of scale with those stores, and to me, it's the shopping center that's drawing the customers, um, based upon the anchor stores and also the monument, uh, signage. Um, and then, once they're inside the, the shopping center, then the smaller stores can attract them by creating a, uh, a pers- a, a, a walkable experience and a, uh, a, a sense of place.
So, just to be clear, um, I'm not asking for larger signage for the regular tenants. What I was trying to express is that I don't think we should be reducing signage for those tenants, um, more so than we would for any other regular business in Charlottesville. So, I think that the, um, the signage, you know, if you look at the standard signage allocations, that's something that would, for example, be applied on the downtown mall, or in other, you know, other commercial districts. So, I'm saying that that, that standard application of the code is fine by us for all those smaller tenants, but what I didn't want to happen is, um, have a recommendation that shrinks their signage size to accommodate for the anchor tenants. So, sorry if I didn't explain that well.
No, that...
But I totally agree with you on...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
They're not gonna be, they're not gonna be like the bullseye pulling people in, I just don't want it to be so small that you couldn't even...
So, it is a bullseye.
See the building.
No, I thought, I thought you were advocating for signage as big as the anchor stores.
No, no, sorry for the confusion, no.
Chair Mitchell, as I mentioned to you earlier, I must depart. Um, the only thing I would say, uh, and so you, I'm leaving it this in good hands with the full commission, is that we scrutinize our entrance corridor so very much, right down to the, the layer on the glass and what color it is. I'm not a fan of signs, but we have a much more stringent enforcement policy in the county, so maybe that's my, uh, but I would, if it were me voting, and I had that opportunity, I would vote the recommendation of, uh, what our code allows, so...
How does this, I mean, look at Fifth Street, for example, in the signage in Fifth Street. Is this much more, uh, robust?
Fifth Street Station?
Yeah.
Well...
That's an accounting part of it.
I worked on that signage, I can speak to it.
Well, and so, I, um, I don't necessarily agree with that sign package, but I wasn't the one making that call. I think there were a lot of calls made on that, that were out of line with our sign package.
But that, I mean, that's mostly a county development.
It was at, it's all county development, but that was someone else, I'm not sure the same, uh, call would be made today. But, uh, and, and that was, you know, and that was on the, uh, sixty-four, so, but, uh, I mean, I'm, I'm with Jody, I mean, why do we need bigger signs? You're gonna be sitting at a red light right there, and there's gonna be ample time for people to see what's in that shopping center. And the small area plan that we created for this shopping center is based off of pedestrian model. And if you've got an anchor store, that's what brings people in. And like I said, I, I don't know how this relates to Whole Foods, but I don't know if y'all have been to Whole Foods, they're not selling anything less, because their sign is smaller there. That's not a large sign that you can see from twenty-nine. That's just my opinion, it's one opinion. I probably have a different vote, so...
Any thoughts?
Still mad about the cow?
What cow?
Their central.
Question for you. So, looking at the suggested, uh, so we can get the word. So, looking at the suggested, uh, let me get the word, my brain is just turning into jelly. Um, the suggested, uh, uh, restrictions, um, conditions.
And I didn't get a copy of the suggested conditions. So if you have one, that would be great to see what, um, potentially...
Does the staff report it?
No, it has, it's just a blank in the...
Page seven?
Yeah, let's see.
I'd like to be specific.
Yep. Right up above it.
Oh, up above?
It's not in the, sorry, okay, got it.
It got me.
Thank you. My brain's apparently jelly as well. Yes, okay.
What was your...
So, um, I think we're talking about, uh, dot four, uh, are, are the issues you're talking about, is that correct?
Yep, yep, so, um, yeah, we're good with one through three, um, totally okay. And I think what we were saying for, um, number four is, um, I had not seen the chart before the staff report, but Jeff and I had had extensive conversations and we put in, um, for each of the sign types, we had to put in that matrix per tenant of the maximums. But, um, what I was suggesting is that for tenants two through nine, which are the non-anchor tenants, that they would be held to the standard, um, aggregate maximum for entrance corridor tenants, which is the seventy-five square feet, which I don't think is in our code right now. So that would keep them from exceeding what would be allowed of any other tenant in an entrance corridor around the city. And then what that does is you have that maximum to go by for those tenants. And then you're really just looking at the anchor tenants as to, you know, those tenants have requested something additional, mainly because, you know, one anchor tenant is twenty times larger than the standard tenant. And so it's not, I don't think it's that these signs are out of scale, it's just that the architecture is larger. So you've got these different components in the architecture. And so you have signage in various areas around the architecture. So it's less that you're gonna have one gigantic sign taking up the whole wall. And that's why we've kinda delineated these smaller areas amongst the architecture. So it could be chosen by the tenant, this is where the sign goes. But it also does outline, okay, you can't go beyond this limit. And I will say that, um, in Fifth Street Station, um, like I said, I did work on that signage package and Wegmans, their anchor, you know, their primary anchor tenant, um, did get a waiver from the board to double the standard signage allotment in the county. And it was a recognition of that very thing. It's a very large store, but it's, it's architectural and you can see that it's not, you know, the, the signage is kind of spread around on the, the variety of frontages. It's telling you different things about like, okay, here's the cafe space, here's the wine store. So in a way, it's, you know, it's a reflection of, for these larger anchor stores, there's often a variety of stores mixed into the building itself. So it's a way to have signage delineate, like, okay, well, here's where this is. And so it's not, it's not typically this one, like, mega billboard along your entrance corridor. It's the fact that you have six-hundred linear feet of frontage and a lot of architectural details and a couple of different things that that anchor tenant may wanna convey to the public.
Would the, uh, condition, or condition, uh, four here be an unreasonable burden on, on the tenants? Do, do you see it creating an economic hardship?
Um, I think it is, um, you know, I appreciate that Jeff is recognizing the importance of the anchor tenants to the success of the overall shopping center, but I don't think it should be at the expense of the smaller tenants. So that's why I had a couple of recommendations about the seventy-five square foot maximum for other tenants as the city would allow, um, for any other tenant in an entrance corridor as well as knocking down the projecting sign from fifteen to thirty as, as Jeff had recommended, um, saying that, you know, a thirty square foot projecting sign seems a little bit out of alignment. And it seemed like the rest of them, we were pretty much, you know, right on, um, right on track with them, so... Um, those are some potential ways we might collaborate.
Thank you.
Sure.
The, the recommendation, Jeff, that you were working on, does that supplement bullet number four? Does it replace bullet number four or is it in addition to bullet number four?
So what, one thing just to talk through quickly is, um, let's say tenant number two came in, and, uh, they were an individual store on an individual parcel. And we reviewed a signage application. The, in, applying that individually to that store, that building, would be, would result in the numbers that you see for the wall signs for staff at twenty-five square foot. Cause it, let's say it was, uh, I know that building's a hundred feet. Um, so that would say a hundred square feet, but we know can't exceed fifty, then EC, it's cut in half. So, so to get that basis down is that the numbers that you see under staff recommendation for two through nine are, would be if, if this were an individual store on its own parcel. That's, that's what we would get. And, and I'm understanding what, what Ashley's saying is starting with sort of the, um, since we're looking at a comprehensive signage plan again, where things are on the table, start with what is allowed at a store based on straight what the regs say to begin with, which would be the fifty square foot wall sign, the twenty square foot canopy, the thirty square foot projecting sign. So that's, that's, I think, the starting point, um, from where she's talking about what would be allocated with not to exceed seventy-five square feet. So, and then, so there's the, there's the, what would be by right individual store, what would be by right for an individual store in an entrance corridor? And then you get to this sort of allocation within there. So as far as modification of the, the fourth bullet, I mean, I certainly can have preamble language to that, but it would come down to, um, for example, the, the last line, where staff recommended maximum area for wall signs, canopy signs, projection signs to be modified as follows. And it would be looking at these columns. What I understand Ashley is saying is she would like wall signs to say fifty, like the canopy sign to say twenty, and the projecting sign to say thirty, under canopy to say, stay at four with the maximum allowable aggregate at seventy-five. So...
For two through nine.
For two through nine, right. That's, that's what I'm hearing her say. Um, so that's what I wanted to make sure, that that's what she is suggesting. I, I, I'm not, you know, without the zoning administrator here, I, I don't, I'm not, uh, not really prepared to offer an opinion. I, I, um, I, I'd like to, you know, I can only lay out what my reason was for this and if the argument for that deviation, uh, is reasonable to you all. Um, that certainly can be expressed easily, but I, I think at this point, I'm, I'm, I... The fact that it is beyond what would be allowed in an entrance corridor, I'm still sort of stuck on that. But, um, but that again, that's the whole point of a comp signage plan. So, um...
The, the, the proposed, uh, Ashley's proposal. How many additional, uh, square feet above the nine oh seven does that take us?
That would get us to that, um...
Still takes us back.
Yeah, what did I add?
So ten fifty. Ten fifty is not a huge difference, guys.
Hey, I think I came up with eleven oh eight, yeah, so, you know, so...
So your proposal gets us, uh, saves us, uh, three hundred square feet. That's not a huge difference. So is there a way we can re, re, I can't, is there a way we can reword bullet number four to reflect Ashley's proposal?
It, I would recommend it be, you know, and I'll read it how I noted it. Um, start with the first part, revise the CSP signage area allocations per the table in the staff report, and that is not including the monument signs or the shopping center sign, with the modifications to the maximum aggregate area for tenants number two through nine revised such that, uh, the maximum aggregate area does not exceed seventy-five square feet per tenant. And with the staff recommended maximum area for wall signs, canopy signs, and projected signs to be modified now, and I would say that, change that to say, and with the, um, signage area originally recommended in the CSP, uh, for wall signs, canopy signs, and projecting signs, to be accepted. And I can certainly clean that up.
I think there may be value in getting the, the ten fifty number in there someplace as well.
You'd have to give me a minute to do some, to do some math, right?
So what I did was I took the seventy-five for two through nine.
Times nine.
And then I just limited anchor one to three hundred, which is what we're showing for the wall sign. So that just gives them three hundred to use, however they choose. So it's not giving them any additional, I mean, they can choose other signs, but they can't have any more than that. And then anchor two gets one fifty as proposed in the wall sign. So that's how I arrived at the ten fifty.
So, so, I mean, seems to me that a reasonable, reasonable motion, and I'm, I can't make it, would be as is suggested. We also accept staff recommendations one, two, and three. And recommendation number four would be as Jeff and Ashley had just negotiated.
I have a motion.
Oh, cool.
I'd like to make that motion.
I, I think we need to get the words down for bullet number four.
And I, so I would like to, you know, and this is, you know, we've, we've done this at times, BAR, um... Where's the blank one?
Dead.
So when it comes to tenant number one, we're leaving at three hundred, zero, thirty, and four, for a total of three thirty-four, or...
So what I was saying is that they get a total of three hundred, so...
So tenant one gets three hundred, tenant two through nine gets seventy-five apiece, and tenant ten gets a hundred and fifty.
I got that.
And then, and we are amenable to reducing the projecting signs if that is, um, you know, something that's important to staff. Otherwise, we could just hold to that maximum, ten fifty, and let the tenants figure it out amongst themselves, given our individual...
And that seems imminently reasonable to me, but...
I would like to make the motion specifying ten fifty.
Second.
I'm not certain to understand the motion. Is the motion that we are, we're going with the recommended motion?
Yes.
We're embracing bullet one, two, and three, and we'll supplement it with... Someone spell that out for us, we have a further recommendation.
So the, the, we would have the aggregate, maximum aggregate area for tenant one to be three hundred, the maximum aggregate area for tenant two through nine to be seventy-five square feet apiece, and the maximum aggregate area for tenant ten to be a hundred and fifty.
Precisely.
Got that? Okay. It has been moved to probably second. Uh, Ms. Creasy, would you poll us?
And that is with any modification relative to, um, the signage types? Yes. You're okay with what the CSP columns recommended, requested is max?
Thank you.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, Mr. Lahendra?
Aye.
Mr. Soli Yates?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you. So we, um, right, so I need to get us out of the ERB and get us back into the planning commission meeting. And we need to review the consent agenda again, so... Ms. Creasy, what do we need to do?
Uh, we need to review it for the first time. We, we kind of passed over it early on. Um, and I will note that item two is not currently in your packet, um, as, uh, it's just not in your packet. So only item one is available on your packet.
You want us to vote on the one that's not in our packet?
No.
So all in favor of the consent agenda, only including item number one, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any objections? The consent agenda is approved. I'll entertain a motion two.
I'd like to have a motion to adjourn to the second Tuesday in...
Second.
October.
Whatever next month is.
October.
Peace out.
That's my line.
Back y'all.
All right.
That's it?
Have to go on. That's about my level of understanding of it too, so, it was impressive.